Okay. Can I have your attention, please? We're going to start the meeting. Very good. Thank you. If you could please call the roll.
This is an LPA meeting. Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Kaczynski.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
President.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for joining us for tonight's meeting. We actually have two meetings. The first one is the LPA, which we're kicking off now, and then that will immediately be followed by our regular council meeting. All right. So, item number three, if we can please read that into the record.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, LPA, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of future land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan pertaining to potable water and sanitary sewer facilities required to serve development designated U.S. Highway 27 business category on the future land use plan map, providing for an effective date.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion in this item?
Motion approved.
Motion of a second? Second? Have a motion and a second on the item. So do we, I'm not sure on this item. Jeff, are you going to give a quick overview on this perhaps?
I certainly can, Mayor.
Thank you.
This item was tabled from a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
May 25th. Okay. The ordinance was initiated by the council, referred to the Comprehensive Planning Board for review and recommendation. They made their recommendation to recommend that the council adopt this ordinance that's before you. What it does is it amends a provision in the comprehensive plan that is specific to development on the U.S. 27 corridor that would be in the U.S. 27 corridor business lane use designation. That designation is on the books. We have zoning that matches it, but it's not on the map. That has not been applied to the property on U.S. 27 just yet. So this would apply prospectively should the council change the lane use of property on U.S. 27, rezone property to match, and then approve a site plan. All those things would have to happen before this policy takes effect. But what it does is it removes the restriction that all property designated U.S. Highway 27 business has to be connected to Sunrise Water and Sewer. It requires that it be a municipal water and sewer system, and it makes one other modification, which is that the connection is required prior to the issuance of a permit for the construction of any building or roof structure. The roof structure is stricken in this ordinance that's before you, and that was just done on the basis that a roof structure and an open air use are essentially the same thing in terms of the amount of water and sewer that they require, which is that typically a septic tank and well is suitable for an open air use. And so roof structure was crossed out just because it seemed to make more sense. That's what the ordinance does. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. So I have a few comments on this item. This is an item that I originally was pushing for, and so currently, and Jeff kind of stated this, but just to put it a little bit more in layman's terms, currently everywhere in town, no matter where you are, you can get your water through a well, you can get your water through one of your neighboring municipalities, whatever is most economical to you, you have the option to do it. As a matter of fact, on today's, on tonight's regular agenda, we've got a property that is doing that, getting their water from a municipal source. So it happens all the time, and it's the way it is today throughout the entire town. However, we set up this new area out west, this new zoning out west, and on this zoning, because we were in kind of a dogfight with Pembroke Pines many years ago when we did this, we put an exclusion in there that you needed to get your water from Sunrise, not from Pines. Okay? Well, that ship has sailed. That's resolved, and frankly, I wish we'd never gotten into it in the first place. But it's over. It's done. It's passed, and so I personally don't see any reason why this should still be in there. And as a matter of fact, I felt it was highly unfair because that property today can get water however it wishes. It's only if it gets rezoned into this light industrial, which is what the comp plan and the council has already affirmed, because it's in a location on U.S. 27 that makes no sense for any regular homes to be built out there. And so based on that, this restriction of having to go strictly to Sunrise, not any municipality like the rest of town, but go to Sunrise kicks into place when this property zoning is changed from what it is today to the light industrial. All of a sudden, you can't get your water wherever you want there. All of a sudden, you have to go to Sunrise to go there, which is a much, much more expensive option and will delay any development out there potentially. We could lose all control over that property and if it were to be annexed into another town because the cost was so high. To me, the risk is so high to not do this that it makes no sense, and there's very little risk to doing it because it just makes it like the rest of the town. That's all. It makes it just like the rest of the town. So I strongly support this. There is, there is kind of a controversy about the piece removing the roof structure that line. I would look for an amendment to the item just so that, right now, the way it comes to us is that those two or three words is stricken out. I'd like to see those words put it back in so that it doesn't create a controversy. I don't, as Jeff said, it's not a big deal either way. It's not integral to what we're doing. What's integral to what we're doing is allowing the water to come from any municipal source rather than be restricted just to Sunrise. So with that introduction, any other comments from the council? Yeah, David?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know that I support the water, water issue. It's that language that's stricken out that I agree with you on, that I would like to have that withdrawn. And then my question is, where is the closest municipal water and sewer line to this area?
Pembroke Pines.
But where?
Sterling.
Right at Sterling?
Well, I don't know if it's Sterling. I think it may be actually right behind the property to the west, to the east of the property.
I'm looking at people shaking their heads yes in the audience.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Lonnie.
Okay, Lonnie. Hi.
Lonnie Bergeron. The water is at the weekly asphalt pump. That's where a 12-inch line is stubbed, and the sewer actually comes all the way around on three property lines that goes to Franklin to feed them their sewer.
Okay. So the sewer line is pretty close to this property?
It's on the property line.
All right. That's fine.
Great.
I'm in favor of this.
I thought it went to 27.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments on this?
Why was it stricken, the roof part? Why was that stricken?
Frankly, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure. Was there, Jeff?
It was, it was stricken because the, what we were doing with this ordinance was trying to set things back to make them commensurate with other parts of the town so that it was not a differential treatment. And in other parts of the town, you wouldn't have to connect to water and sewer if you built a roof structure that otherwise met all the exemption criteria for water and sewer. So it was something that applied to U.S. 27 but not elsewhere, so it was logical to do that, and that came from staff that didn't come from council or the board, but it was reviewed by the board and made its way to you as it is today.
I believe, Mayor, I believe I just heard, Lonnie, that the sewer surrounds three sides of the property?
Yes, sir.
So it's really fairly close, and the sewers, I mean, it's not like you'd have to bring it in from any distance or anything. It's there already.
It's on the property line.
Right.
And we're probably 1,000 feet or less on the water line. And right now, there's plans for Broward County and Pembroke Pines to come from 207 where Franklin's water is and take it out to Holiday Park. So it's going to be on the Griffin Road corridor within 24 months.
Good.
And we will naturally, when we get enough developed, we will connect the loop so that there's the right pressures for fire and everything that they need out there so it's not a dead end line. So I believe the, I don't know why staff initiated that, but I mean, if we're talking roof structure and we put in a pump house with a roof, we're going to be potentially bringing in that water and sewer for no reason at all at one time. And I think there was early discussions that dealt with, you know, an occupiable structure of some kind, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that, you know, irrigation house is going to require us to bring 1,000-foot of water to the property line, so.
All right. You have any comments on this item?
The only comment I can make right now is I gave my concerns that protect the town. They were rejected, and I don't support this project.
Okay. All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. For three and a half years, one of the things that came up every time was septic tanks and wells. And the neighbors in that area asked every time not to have any septic tanks out there because of the possibility of being poisoned, the groundwater, from a commercial endeavor that would be, could be going on there. So therefore, we said that there would be no septic tanks or wells on the property for potable water. Now, if they want to put a sprinkler system in, that's one thing. But the comp plan and the residents out there, in our public hearings, said, no septic tanks, no potable water wells. And by doing the roof structure, you can put a septic tank in, and you can put a water well in. And I checked that with our planner, and he says, yes, that's where it can happen. So I ask you to delete that about roof structures, to delete the delete, and leave it the way it was passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other? Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrea Kaiser here on behalf of Bergeron, U.S. 27. As the mayor so eloquently stated, for many years, the town identified the U.S. 27 corridor as a suitable location for commercial and industrial development, and for many years, the town has worked really hard to make that vision a reality, and its residents have been patiently waiting to stimulate the tax base with this type of development. But because of that hotly litigated feud with Pembroke Pines, a business regulation that is applicable only to one land use category and that dictates who a property owner can do business with managed to make its way into the future land use element of a comprehensive plan where it really doesn't belong because comprehensive plans are the realms of policy decisions. This business regulation attempted to create a monopoly in favor of Sunrise, and now we know it's infeasible based on the Mayor Ryan's comments that Sunrise has never agreed to any, or to any plan to serve all our parts of Southwest Ranches. This business regulation is self-defeating to the goals, objectives, and policies of the U.S. 27 business land use designation, and today's text amendment fixes that. We respectfully and humbly ask you to no longer punish us and the residents for this business regulation born out of a political feud and urge you to reconsider and vote affirmative on this text amendment. Also, an affirmative vote rectifies a lot of unintended consequences the town may not have contemplated at the time. For example, as the mayor mentioned, all residents are treated fairly and equally. There are five residents just this year that were able to get approval to get their water and sewer from Cooper City and Sunrise. Also, property owners will not be excessively and improperly burdened with trying to assemble right away in order to install over four and a half miles of infrastructure to secure water and sewer services from Sunrise when there is an alternate availability a few mere thousand feet away from the property. And aside from the practical impossibility, it avoids using the comprehensive plan to impose a requirement that is neither related or proportional to the impact of development. It promotes greater consistency throughout the comprehensive plan in ULDC and resolves existing conflicts, and more importantly, unleashes the ability of the town to achieve their goals for the U.S. 27, and we are allies to those goals. And there are two other impediments to achieving the town's goals. The first is a council member's opposition to the possibility of an incinerator use, which is a false concern because incinerator uses are prohibited in this zoning district. Our client has proposed a development agreement in conjunction with his pending land use applications to further prohibit the incinerator use in the future, and two of the Bergerons have publicly stated that they do not support this incinerator. And finally, there's an email from the town attorney on behalf of a council member to the wife, which will be addressed momentarily from Stephen Waldman. Thank you so much for listening. We appreciate your service to the town. We urge you to reconsider for an affirmative vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Waldman. I'll be reading into the record a letter from Ally Bergeron. Esteemed council members, regrettably, an active COVID infection prevents my attendance tonight, and I have asked my son, Stephen Waldman, to read the following statement on my behalf for your consideration in connection with the town-initiated text amendment, agenda item number eight. I received a most disconcerting email last Friday from town attorney Poliakoff, patently at the direction of council member Jablonsky, relaying nine conditions which might garner Mr. Jablonsky's favorable vote on the pending text amendment if Bergeron were to deliver a written contract committing to same. I promptly responded to this email that Bergeron has not and will not engage in such quid pro quo contract legislation negotiations. Because of the importance of making clear that neither Bergeron entities or their representatives have engaged in that type of negotiation with council member Jablonsky or any other elected official directly or indirectly, I provided all of you with a copy of my response to Mr. Poliakoff's email. Aside from the general impropriety of such a proposal from an elected official on this type of matter, the nine conditions relayed through town council are unrelated to the merits of the pending text amendment and present extorted political leveraging. The text amendment before you concerns only removing a practical barrier to accomplishing the goals and objectives this town has already set forth for the U.S. 27 corridor area of the town by making it possible to address the water and sewer impacts of the development envisioned by your comprehensive plan. By contrast, most of the nine relayed conditions have nothing whatsoever to do with providing water and sewer to the U.S. 27 business district. Several of them would impose more stringent requirements than required by either town or Broward County regulations. Several outrageously purport to restrict on a permanent basis the right to encumber or sell land owned not only by Mr. Bergeron but any Bergeron entity or affiliate even outside town boundaries. Such restraints on alienation, not to mention how wholly unrelated they would be to the actual impacts of the very development contemplated by your comp plan, are patently illegal. Council member Jablonsky has previously stated on record his preliminary views that he is not entirely sold on the text amendment and that the incinerator needs to be settled for him to move forward with not only the text amendment but the Bergeron's whole project. If this remains his position, it is essentially one defying the legislated policy of the town. These are not valid and possibly pretextual concerns because the town code as written would not allow such uses. Not only does Bergeron acknowledge these restrictions, but it has proposed a development agreement in connection with other applications for comp plan consistent development which would have the legal effect of making the current version of the town code permanently binding, including the existing prohibitions on incinerator and related uses. Accordingly, alleged concerns about potential incinerator use within the U.S. 27 business district present no valid reason to oppose a text amendment bearing on the separate, unrelated issue of allowing feasible means to address water and sewer impacts of development that is allowed. We urge council member Jablonsky to cast a logical and fair vote on the merits of the pending town-initiated text amendment and to abandon any attempt to impose conditions of unrelated political agenda. The main reason you should vote in favor of this text amendment is to respectfully get out of your own way. The Sunrise-only requirement has produced the unintended consequence of rendering the tax-based development goals of the U.S. 27 business district a practical nullity. The existing phrasing makes no sense whatsoever given that there are nearer financially feasible means to address the water and sewer impacts of any of the expressly allowable uses. Considering the willingness of alternate service providers and the lack of any commitment by Sunrise to provide service, as recently confirmed in an April 2024 email from Sunrise Mayor Ryan publicly presented by Mayor Bright Cruz at the April 24, 2024 Town Council meeting stating, Sunrise has never agreed to any plan or committed to implementing a plan for delivery of such services to all or part of Southwest Ranches. You should vote in favor of the text amendment to remove the self-defeating Sunrise-only phrasing from your comp plan. Respectfully, Ally Waldman. Ally Bergeron.
Thank you. Any other?
Well, howdy, everybody.
Welcome.
It's an honor to be here, and the first thing I want to do is thank all of you for your service to the most beautiful town in all of Broward County. And I agree that your rural lifestyle, I've lived it my whole life. Our family's been here for eight generations, all the way back into the 1800s. Arrived in Davie in 1910. I mean, I'm very proud of our reputation, extremely. Just a little boy that left home with a couple hundred dollars. I've lived the American dream, and our family has been very instrumental in thanking God for our journey to make a difference for this community, and we're proud of our reputation. And I want to just talk from the standpoint of good faith. I remember when many, many residents and many of this council, and you were there too, Mayor, come to me and said, we would, really, this particular area could provide a tax base to give relief to your citizens without impacting your rural lifestyle because there's a cemetery behind us, a landfill to the south of us, a truck stop to the north of us, and over 100,000 18-wheelers 24 hours a day. And the thing I said when the residents come to me and a lot of the council members is, we would be fine with that, and we'll make you very proud, but I don't want to be used as a political ping pong ball. And I made that clear right then. We have operated in good faith ever since then, but that was over a decade ago. We have lived up to everything we said. In 2016, I remember precisely, and we made our concern that this requirement is uneconomical and most likely can't even be designed because you can't put sewer and water on top of sewer and water that already exist. I'm civil engineering construction for 60 years, and the right-ofways and all the things that the town would have to do. A private individual can't do that, and I made my concerns right then and there. And there were statements made that there's drawings and Sunrise is committed to bring sewer and water to your CCA property. As I investigated that, that's not true. They have not, and they have, they've reserved no capacity. They're willing to service, which, this town's very blessed. You have three providers, and what your responsibilities are is to do what's best for the citizens and all property owners, to have the ability to connect to one of three providers that already have the infrastructure in the ground where your property owners that live here and your citizens are not duplicating an expense into the future. I don't know how you put in a loop system through other cities on top of sewer and water that's already in the ground that your residents and your property owners have the ability to tap into. You want to do what's best for all property owners, and I really don't want to be singled It's not fair. We are part of this community, and I want to be proud at the end of my journey, and I've operated in good faith with all of you. Everything I said in 2016 is the same, and a lot of things that were said there were not true. And I don't want to get into negativism. They're not true. There is no commitment from Sunrise. I have the letters from their staff saying there's no capacity reserved. I have letters from the mayor. I think the mayor of Sunrise sent you, Steve.
Yep.
Now, they're willing, and even the recommendations from the providers around you, all of them are willing to cooperate for the best interest of your citizens, your property owners, where there's infrastructure already in the ground. Why in the future would you want property owners in this town, citizens, to not connect into infrastructure that's already built? That doesn't make any sense. I'm not saying this for just our property. I'm saying it for the whole town, for all, everybody, everybody that you represent. And first of all, there was, they've even said to you that the engineering feat to go through another city to connect a loop system in would be very difficult because you can't build sewer and water on top of sewer and water that exists. And why would you do that and cost any property owner in this town those expenses? You've got Davie-Cooper City on the east side. They can service those areas. Your property owners need to have that ability. You have Pembroke Pines on the south side. They've already sent a letter to you that they would supply water from 184th West all the way to U.S. 27, and the loop system's already in. You have the county right now designing water all the way out to Holiday Park. Something doesn't make sense here. I'm for the people in this community. I'm not just for me. My motto, it's all about we. And I don't understand, you know, in 2016, the mayor even brought up, you were concerned that that was brought up five minutes before the meeting. And what's the purpose? But the thing that every council member, nearly all of you, and the mayor, is that we're in a lawsuit, and when it's over, you want to bring this back up. Well, that's fair. I wanted, I didn't want to interfere in anything, so here we are eight years later, and the lawsuit is over. So do we do what's best for every property owner in this community? My company has been in this business for 60 years, and we're willing to help you and help every- help every property owner to figure out what's the best way that everybody can have sewer and water, and mainly water, the most economical way for all of your property owners. And I'm one of them. I'm not asking for special treatment. Our plans that, that we have, we're going to be bringing water. Sewer's already out there. I can't put sewer and water on top of sewer and water that already exist. It doesn't make any sense. And as that connection happens, everybody from about 205 or 202 west, the whole loop system's in. None of your residents have to pay for it. The county's contributing to that. They're bringing it out to Holiday Park. We're contributing to that. But your residents benefit from that. When we bring water up Sterling Road, everybody that borders that in your town benefits from that. And you got, you got Sunrise saying they've never, there is no drawings and there is no capacity set aside. Not that they're not willing to talk to you about, and even the mayor of Sunrise, and I apologize for talking so much, but I'm a little emotional in all of this because I think I've been singled out and I don't know why. But the mayor even says that the best interest of Southwest Ranches and all its residents is to tie in to the providers that already have the infrastructure in the ground for all your residents, not just me. And I want to be a positive to this community. And when this town come to me and all your residents and many of the council members and said, would we record, would cooperate on this? I said, fine, but don't use me as a political ping pong ball. And I apologize for mentioning that twice. We can be an asset that will help your residents with a tax base without impacting this beautiful community. And we've come a long way. This has been going on for a decade. And now it's time to do what's right, not, not just for the U.S. 27 Industrial Commercial District that this town, not me, said this is what's best for our community. This is what's best, to give them some relief without impacting their lifestyle. And anytime that we don't allow any property owner to connect to infrastructure that exists, shame on us. I will tell you that. It doesn't make sense. That doesn't benefit your residents. I'm not speaking just for me. And I, and I, I really apologize for, for talking so much, but it's important. It's important. So we do what's best for the community and what's best for the residents. And I will say, I am appalled to the request I got telling me I, I can't sell my property and like all these crazy things. I haven't, I've been in business since I was 18 years old and I, I have never in my career ever seen something like that. And I don't want to make a big deal out of it. All I want to do is do what's best for the community and I don't want to be singled out. I want to be a part of your community. And I, I want to, I want to make sure that our family is a positive asset. And I will say that it's important that, good faith, we've been in this journey a long time. And here we are eight years after this text amendment was put in. And because of how much I care about this community and you were in a lawsuit, I just said, let it ride till it's over. You have property, and I want to tell you this right now, you, you have, well, it's not you have property, these citizens have property that was bought with their tax dollars. And in 2016, in the minutes, and Keith Polikoff is correct in saying, your property is worthless without sewer and water. Well, guess what? You got sewer and water. And guess what? The whole loop system's in. And guess what? It's tied into your property. And guess what? Pembroke Pines is agreed. Lay down the, the bitterness between the lawsuit and all of that. Do what's best for this community and your residents. You have a big investment there. If you brought Sunrise, if it was feasible, which it's not feasible and you can't put sewer and water on top of sewer and water, and it got to our property, you got two and a half miles to get it to your property. These people, your citizens' property, that's about two and a half million dollars. And then you don't have a loop system. You can't dead end on the citizens' property. You can't dead end. You've got to have a whole loop system. But that system is in. And you have Pembroke Pines that's willing to cooperate and you have Sunrise and you have Davie Cooper City. And I think it's wonderful that you have providers that have the infrastructure that can support the best interest of every property owner. And I would be honored, my son would be, our staff and our people, to give you any guidance on how all of your property owners, how, how do you get them the best service the most economical way for everybody? And I don't want to be singled out. I'll be honest with you. It's unethical. It's unfair. And it's probably illegal. So I want to be a part of this community. Don't, don't treat me different than anybody else and don't even treat me better. And I'm willing to help this anytime for the best interest of this community. I love this community. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
So thank, thank you.
Boy, I hate to bring this up, but Pembroke Pines saved your butt from an empty prison. If you look at what policy is nowadays, you would have nothing but an empty prison. And beginning, you would have had the most sought-after criminal element you could ever imagine in that place. MS-17 or whatever the hell her name is, those guys, the witnesses wouldn't even make it to the court hearing. I mean, that's some real monsters. Now, second of all, okay, he's offering to help. We need him for something very major in this town. Okay? Who's got more gravitage with the, with the rest of the state of Florida than Mr. Bergeron? We really need him. Okay? So don't single him out and piss him off. Okay? But he probably would still help you anyway. I, I just don't know what to say. The foot, his property is shaped such, no incinerator that I know of that has been built, and I'm sure Richard will back me up on this, could be, could fit on the property we're talking about. Those little squares, you're talking about a massive amount of trash that has to be burned to make it financially feasible. If the costs are anywhere around 1.5 billion dollars, and that's just a rough estimate, you've got to have station areas. I mean, you couldn't even put the recycling center that Pembroke Pines is going to build down, or Waste Management is, on that piece of property. And then why would you build one next to the other in the first place? So anyway, that's my story and I really urge you to, to put any, any thought of an incinerator going on that piece of property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Mary G. Chapels, been here 65 years. I was in on the ground floor on this fiasco. I went to the prison in Texas. I have video of it, the whole damn thing. And then we got into a bout with Pembroke Pines. And then we used Bergeron as our leverage, politics, politics, politics. And so he suffered as a landowner and he said, he sat by for eight years while we kicked the ball down, the can down the road. And finally, we lost and we had to pay Pembroke Pines. And now let's make peace with Pines and be done with it and get the water. And let's give this man as a private landowner the privilege that you would give anybody else as a landowner to have. But that's not the way this town plays. You guys play nothing but politics. I am so sick of the politics. I really am. How about being neighbors? You guys are not up there being paid. You volunteered to serve the public. You're supposed to be serving me and him and every other resident in this town. And all I see is you playing politics. Now you want to add something else. It's plain and simple. Give the man his water. Let him use water and sewage on his property and do what he's supposed to do with it. And stop playing politics. It sucks.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. I thought I was the only one, but I guess I'm not. It's okay. You know, common sense, common sense in politics, and this is my first little journey into politics, you can never, this is the Everglades, guys. Look at your logos, look at your concept. How in the world, a gentleman that's been here way before you guys were all here, especially me, I've only been here 22 years, we cannot play chess or politics with water, residents, taxes. That's just not cool. Leave that for Washington, D.C. We're in Southwest Ranches. This is the Everglades. Forget about this name, Southwest Ranches. Before this existed, he was here. But common sense, if it's there, let them use it. I have no dog in the fight. It's funny I say that, but common sense has got to exist. I know you guys are some expert chess players. I played with one of you guys. But, um, common sense, how could you even have this conversation or send an email with directives like that to a gentleman that isn't deserving of it? But I'm not going to drag this on and on, but I had to give you my two cents, maybe three. But thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Allen, 12701 Mustang Trail. I've known Ronnie over 20 years and a more upright citizen can't be found in Florida. He has been a protagonist and a protector of the Everglades. You don't see his Facebook posts all the time, educating the public how important the Everglades is. When we became a town in the year 2000, we made many missteps, many. And I was there for a lot of them. One of them was the great plan to zero-scape our whole town. And they started out in rolling oaks and out west. People had to tear down barns. They had to uproot their, their plants and plan to zero-scape. And at the time, the landscape project went to a friend of the council. There were some really bad things done. And I'm going to quote Shakespeare, "The good men do is often turd with the bones, but the evil lives long after them." Remember with your decisions, what you do, if you don't do the right thing, the evil you do will be remembered for many, many years, as it has been tonight. And I want to vouch for one of the most honorable men in our state of Florida. Please do write by him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other further public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. All right. I'm going to go through it one more time. What we're doing is not fair. This needs to be changed. It's a simple change and it needs to be changed so that this property is fairly treated just like all the other properties in Southwest Ranches, so that it is not specifically singled out to be restricted where no other property in Southwest Ranches is restricted. We've got to do the right thing tonight. And Gary, I'm, we've got to do the right thing. Here's, 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 here's the two alternatives. One is that we do the right thing. We make this minor change. We let this property use Pines' water. We develop that, that Bergeron family develops it in a way that does not allow an incinerator because that's already restricted. And frankly, the Bergeron family has given each of us their word that there's not going to be on there, which is probably stronger than it not being in the, in the document. So it's not an incinerator. Incinerator has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. Let me be clear about that. Zero, nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. So is it, is it possible for this property to go to Sunrise and use Sunrise water rather than Pines' water? I'm submitting to you that it's not possible. And the reason why I say is because I've had multiple personal conversations with the mayor of Sunrise who has assured me that it's not possible, that number one, he does not see it as a possibility for his commission. And number two, for them to put the pipes in, as Mr. Bergeron has already said, they would literally, this was not a figure of speech that he was saying, where they would need to put the pipes one on top of the other. No, that is a physical reality. They would have to put the Sunrise pipes literally, physically on top of the Pines proper, uh, pipes. So what's going to happen there? If Pines has some sort of a leak, they're going to have to dig down through a Sunrise pipe? They're not going to do it. To do it, they would have to get, to put those, for Sunrise to put their pipes in Pines right away, Pines is going to have to give them permission. Pines is not going to give them permission. They're not going to do it because they're not going to let them put a pipe on top of their pipe because they're not going to put that restriction on themselves if their pipe ever leaks. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. So, so what does that mean for this property? That means it's not going to be developed. That's what it means. That's what it means. And so all of that potential tax revenue that could come to our towns to either lower our taxes or to maintain our taxes where they are, it ain't going to happen. You're going to pay more out there if we don't do this. There's no doubt about it. It may not be today, it may not be next year, but it's going to happen. And you, you may notice it or you may not notice it, but your, your wallet's going to notice it. It's going to be a difference. That's the best scenario if we don't do it. That is the best scenario and it's a crappy scenario, but that's the best scenario. But I'm going to tell you what the worst scenario is. And this is not something that the Bergerons have ever said to me, but I didn't fall off the Allen truck last night, okay? I can read the tea li, tea leaves and I'm sure you can as well. They're not going to sit on a piece of property that's worth that much in value and do nothing with it. And this is, this is me speaking. This is not the Bergeron speaking. I'm going to say it again. They did not say this to me. They did not threaten this to me. They did not in any way allude this to me. This is me speaking, not them speaking. But they're not going to sit on that property. I'm telling you, they're not going to just sit on that property. What's going to happen is that property is going to go into Pines. That's what's going to happen. Whether we like it or not, that property is going to go in Pines. And all the work that the comp plan did to put restrictions on that property to make sure that whatever was built there is not offensive to our folks that are living out there on 210, 208, 209, all those restrictions go out the window. Out the window. And then Pines, what we're doing is we're saying, Pines, you guys decide what it is you want to be built right next to us on U.S. 27. You decide. Now you tell me how you think that's going to work out. You just let me know how you think that's going to work out, how that's going to work out for our residents. If we want to talk about risk to our residents, if we want to talk about risk to our residents, on whether we do this or not, the risk is so much higher if we do nothing here. And on the other hand, if we do take out this restriction, the value to our residents, both from a quality of life and from our, our, our wallets and our tax bills are huge. The right thing to do, at the end of the day, the right thing to do is also the fair thing to do. And that's to remove this restriction that should never have been put in there in the first place. Let's remove it and let's be done with it. Let's get this property developed in a way that is in tune with our residents and our town and let's move forward. That's what I would say. That's what I would say. Comment? Please.
Mr. Mayor.
So I would rather take the name Bergeron out, although I've known Ronnie probably for 30 years and have a lot of respect, let's just take the name out. If this were anybody, they'd need to be treated the same as the east side of town, the central part of town, the west side of town. It, it isn't fair to single out a property for whatever the reasons are. I mean, our, our battles with Pines are over. I mean, why would we want to continue to hold him accountable or the property owner accountable for something that they really had no part in? I, I really believe we ought to let them use the water that's right nearby. I mean, I don't even know if that pipe's going to exist. I don't know if you guys know, we keep talking about Sunrise Water. The old road that goes out to the Buddhist monastery that's west of Weston out there, that's the way the Sunrise pipe ends. They'd have to run it out to 27 and then down 27 from the road that's about to be consumed by a, a water system that they're putting in up there and come on down to Griffin Road and down to Sterling Road. Makes no sense. Wouldn't make sense for anybody to do that. So I am all for giving them the water. And I'm not all that clear. We're saying we want to leave in the language it says or roof structure or take that out.
Currently, it's deleted in this change. I would like to remove the deletion so that it stays in.
I'm in favor of that.
Thank you.
So totally supportive of moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you, Bob.
Is it possible for me to ask Mr. Bergeron a question?
Sure, sure. I mean, this is a big deal. This is the future of our town right here.
Right.
So your, your, your thought is to build something along US 27, which would be revenue generating for the town? So what you're planning to do?
Yeah, a tax base.
Okay. And, and just so I, because I was looking through the, this list of approved uses, and I just want to ask if storing cars would not be revenue generating for the town, right?
What is that?
Storing automobiles on that property would not be revenue generating for our town?
Whatever was approved.
Right.
You've already approved what's allowed there. And I want to make it clear, incinerators aren't allowed and, and we're not for incinerators anyway.
I'm not going.
We're for recycling and putting products back into use. That's what we're for.
Right.
Save the environment and our quality of life and, but.
Let me answer this question real quick. All right, so any of the approved uses, when this land receives the land use and zoning change, it'll be taxed at the same rate for any of the approved uses? So if, if storing automobiles is an allowed use, you get revenue?
Is there, I just, I don't know if revenue is generating.
Yeah, any use that's approved, it'll, it'll, it'll be assessed at the value that is set there in your millage and your, and your revenue will come from that, no matter if there's a car park there or we put up a, a street level warehouse or commercial retail center on Griffin that has a restaurant in it. It's all going to, you're going to get revenue from 100% of it.
I, I understand, but my, my just question has to go with the, the storage of automobiles in, in bank and the whole property, that is not something that could be income generating for the town of Southwest Ranches?
It is.
Just as a taxable value of the property?
That's a tax base. Yes.
Okay. All right, and that answered my question. Thank you for all your contributions to the state of Florida, Mr. Bergeron. Thank you.
Well, I'm honored to be a part of this community and just want to be treated like anybody else. No better, no worse. Thank you.
Now, now if I go into my points here. Routinely, in fact, we have an issue tonight where we are approving water usage on Hancock Road tonight. This comes up week after week. Somebody wants water, municipal water. I mean, the Fernandez is, who just moved out here, Dr. Fernandez is a liveover on Mustang Trail. They paid exorbitant amount of money to have the municipal water piped into their property because they wanted municipal water. This water that Mr. Bergeron is seeking is right near his property. The sewer is right near his property. It's, and there's no plans from Sunrise to put in water at all. And we can't, like Mr. Bergeron says, we cannot put one water and sewer on top of another. It's going to end up causing fights if there's a, a breakage somewhere between Sunrise and Pembroke Pines. Who's going to allow who to dig over there? There are going to be additional supervisors. It's going to create a very complicated situation. And as to this issue that came up with the de-annexation, you know, we, we had this problem early on, probably about three years ago, with the possibility of de-annexation. And I really don't want to be up here to say, I told you so. I really don't.
Right, right.
Because this is, having this built out there is important to the town, so I support it. With, with the strike through, with putting in that language.
The strike through or it's removed?
Right.
Good, thank you. Yeah, Jim.
Mayor, can I, would it be inappropriate, Gary, can you tell us what those nine or eight or nine requests were? Would you, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, no? I know you have the best, you feel you have the best interest of the town at heart. I understand that.
Yeah.
I know how you feel. I know your, I know what your heart is. I know that you think, but.
They were done to protect the town.
Yes.
One of them was the, dealt with the, I'm just going to give you the short version instead of reading them verbatim. One of them dealt with the well field zone of influence. The other one dealt with no primary or incidental use of allowed household, commercial, construction, industrial yard, or any other waste stream substance, including without limitation to disposal, storage, sorting, recycling, incinerating, treatment, or handling of such waste without the unanimous approval of the council. Another one was the, trying, trying, trying to keep them in order here. No, important ones, no parcel being serviced by, being serviced by the city of Pembroke Pines may or be sold, conveyed, or transferred, including right of way to the city of Pembroke Pines. No extension of water or sewer line beyond the limits of the property which the town has granted site plan approval and no connection from another property to such water and sewer line without the approval of the council. No additional fee payments impacts fee, impact fees and otherwise to the city of Pines unless the same fees are paid to the town. No attempts to de-annex any properties owned by any Bergeron entity affiliate or otherwise related entity. No sale, lease, or sublease of any property owned by any Bergeron entity affiliate or otherwise related entity to the city of Pembroke Pines. And those are the, those are the highlights on that. Basically, they were all rejected.
Mr. Bergeron? Would you publicly answer some of those or would that be not legal to do?
We, we answered some of them already tonight.
Oh, yeah, right.
We never had any intentions of incinerators or handling solid waste on this property. Never. Matter of fact, we've been given advice to Broward County that they need to start diverting away from landfills and recycling. And the only thing that goes into a landfill is the residue. Put all these products back into usable products. We're not in the Wild West anymore. It's all about a quality of life for this whole county. Incinerators too. We're not, we're not for incinerators. I don't even know where that come from. I think incinerators in a very short timeframe will be outdated. There, there's too much technology coming out that turns garbage into fuel. It's just not economical yet. So we've been working with the county for the best interest of 31 cities to encourage the commission to recycle and put 90% of it back into reusable products inside of a building. None of us can be against recycling. That's the future. So we, we, I don't know where this come from, that we're, we're not allowed to do it. We've made public statements. We're, we're against incinerators. And furthermore, I don't know where this all come from to start with. And I want to make that clear. And I, and we, we made it clear earlier as well. And I think the whole thing here is I just don't want to be treated different than anybody else in this town. And I, I really want to, I don't think that's appropriate. And, and you're going to hurt your own citizens. Because when you come to me, the town comes to me, the residents come to me and say, will you go along with this? I said, yeah, just don't use me as a political ping pong ball. That's my exact words. And we, and we'll create a tax base in an area that doesn't affect the rural lifestyle of this community. We'll do that. And we're still committed to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt. I got a question real quick also. A concern was that once the property's developed, that you would possibly de-annex and go to Pines. I stand here, I sit here this evening and hear your love for the town. That wouldn't be one of your concerns, would it?
No.
To de-annex? No, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't think it would be from what I've heard this evening, but.
No, no, it's, and it's just, definitely not. Why? We wouldn't. Now, if, if you want to completely treat us different and not let us get sewer and water that's right at our property.
No, I'm, I'm, once it is, if it is approved. But yes, sir, if it is approved, once you start building, once it's developed, you would end, a de-annex?
No. Absolutely not.
Right.
Can I answer that real quick? The, the, if we're going forward and the town's goals and objectives are being met through the development and the tax revenue is created and we're able to turn them into income-producing property, there is absolutely no reason to de-annex. And de-annex is not necessarily an easy thing.
Right.
But if I was going to say that, that you're gift wrapping a reason, you're gift wrapping a reason. You cannot do some of these unlawful demands and have veto power. One vote, veto power over the will of the commission and the residents and the property owners? And the last thought that I'll leave you with, and then Andrea's got one more point that Mr. Jablonski didn't read in that I think you guys should hear, is that if any property owner that resides or does business in this town, including council and staff, were standing over here, being treated like this, how would you feel? How would you feel if you wanted to do business with your own town that you own property in, and you've gone through something like this for eight years, spent millions of dollars? I mean, relied to the fact that with, with no objection until the water and sewer issue, which is completely unrelated to the land use and zoning application that's pending. And, and, and I mean, it is like being held hostage. So I just want to leave you with that. And she's got one more of those.
Yeah, one condition that was missed is that in the event that any Bergeron entity affiliate or otherwise related entity is a party to the ownership, development, or operation of any solid waste facility described in the foregoing paragraph established within one mile of the deed-restricted property, the declaration shall not apply for any further town development orders or permits without the unanimous determination of the full town council and that further development orders and permits may be granted. So even if, you know, these conditions presented were well-intended, as an advocate for our client, we can advise our client to accept conditions that first of all restrict constitutional property rights and secondly, and extend that to properties even outside the boundaries of the town. We wouldn't be good advocates if we advised our client to, to entertain any of those conditions and also in the manner that they were, they were, you know, proposed as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bergeron?
I have one more thing and then I'll shut up. And I apologize.
I have a question for Mr. Bergeron.
Anytime you give a redneck cowboy alligator wrestler a microphone, it's serious. We like to talk a lot. But one thing I, I really, for the benefit of your residents, to really understand this, you bought the CCA property. I think you spent about $8 million and you've been paying interest on that. And in 2016, and Keith is, he's right in what he's saying, our property is worthless without sewer and water. Understand that even if it was feasible, which it's not, and Sunrise has no plans, no commitment, you still got two and a half miles to get to the people's property. $8 million. Where Pembroke Pines has agreed to give you sewer and water and it's tapped into the people's property. It's already in, the infrastructure's in, the whole loop system's in. You're talking about $2.5 million, but then you have to have a loop system from that on top of it. How do you loop through another town? Now, there's been a lot of emotions with, with this lawsuit. And I, I got to say that we all got to come to our senses for the best interest of the people that live here. What benefits them? And set down the swords and, I talked to the city manager this afternoon. He's already sent you letters. He even talked with Andy and asked for, what do you want? West of 184th, all the way out, what do you want? We'll put something together. He's also agreed to give you sewer and water to the people's property. You're, you're talking about to put a whole loop system and it could take 10, 15 years to connect a loop system. You can't dead-end a line into your, the people's property that y'all spent, spent $8 million on. You can't just run a line there. You, you got to have a whole loop system. Well, it's already there. So I apologize, but to me, it's not all about me. It's all about we and the best interest of this community. That's what it's all about. Set all the emotion stuff out of it. Do what's best for the people you serve. And let all the people tie in to where it's most economical for them. You represent them. That's what this is all about. And don't single us out, that's all. Let us help you create the tax base. Let us help you be part of the community based upon your vision, based upon this town's industrial commercial employment center that started 10 years ago. And let's do it together for the best interest of the people you serve. And thank you, and I apologize, I talked too much.
Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Bergeron? I have, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind, sir.
Yes, sir.
On the subject of de-annexation, you said you had no intentions, thought never crossed your mind, et cetera. Am I correct? Am I correct in that?
No, well, no. I have no intentions today.
Okay, my, my question.
If, to be honest with you, if you don't do what's right for the, the people, not just me, that would probably be a different story. But I don't look to go anywhere. That wouldn't be fair and it wouldn't be ethical.
I know, but here's my question. Would you be willing to put that in legal terms?
I think my word's pretty good, sir.
I don't, I don't doubt your word, but you also have a court reporter here.
I, I think my. We cannot engage in, in what's called contract zoning under the law, and you making us sign a legal document with conditions for your vote is contract zoning. We just can't go there.
I just asked a question.
Yeah. All right. I, I will tell you that we want to be a part of your community. And we want to be a part of developing that property that doesn't impact the rural lifestyle of this community. And we.
Please be quiet in the, in the audience.
And we, we want to be a part of the community. We don't want to be treated special, but we don't want to be treated different. That's fair. What, what's wrong with that? You know, the, the thing that I really want you all to understand, because You know, the thing that I really want y'all to understand because I just don't want to, your own property paid for by your residents has the ability to generate revenue for your residents.
I got a question back. I may. You guys are in a contract for the CCA property, correct? That's going to be coming before you for permission to get water. We've heard from, that they're already working with the city of Pembroke Pines. So when you agreed to sign and go with that deal on the council for the town, did you make them sign a separate contract with certain conditions like you're asking us to do? I don't believe so. So again, singled out, I don't know what's happening here, but it's time to vote up or down. We've been doing this for too long. Yeah, blackmail, extortion, I'm not sure, but enough's enough. This is, this is wrong. This is just wrong. Let's call a vote.
All right. If you can just wrap it up.
We're proud to be a part of this town.
I know you are.
Okay, we're, I want you to know that. And believe me, the most important thing I got, Gary, is my reputation. Very proud to be a very successful businessman, but my reputation comes number one. And I think we got, we can do the right thing for the benefit of everybody and just don't treat me different than anybody else. Thank you, and I apologize, Steve, for, this is a little emotional, but I hope you understand, Gary, I'm, I'm a man of my word. You can check me out and I'm very proud of that. I'm proud to be a part of your community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really believe that we need to first adjust the motion to take out that strikeout. So if we can.
Yes, thank you.
I think, who made the?
I made the motion.
Is that agreeable with the maker and the second? I think, Jim, you seconded it, did you? To remove the strikeout, we're dealing with the roof. Okay, yes. I got it. All right, so that has been adjusted. Gary, I know, you know, you're hardest to do what's best for the town. I sincerely believe passing this is what's best for the town. I really do. And I hope that you'll, you'll vote with us on this.
I hope so.
Please call the vote.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we have, the next item is the approval of minutes of May 23rd, 2024 for the LPA. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, is there any public comment, additions or corrections to the minutes?
You need a motion first.
Oh.
Motion approved.
Yeah.
Second.
Thanks. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Council, Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kozinski?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. We're going to take about a five-minute recess and then we will start our regular town council meeting for the evening. Thank you. All right, if everybody could please take their seat, we're going to start our regular council meeting. Please take your seat. All right, if we can please call the meeting to order.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. Before we get started, we lost an original rancher this last week, Deborah Goffrose. She was here long before this town was formed. She was always a bright smile. She was always ready to jump in and volunteer and always had a funny story, always put a smile on your face. She was just an incredible individual that really embodied what it is to be a Southwest rancher. She will be dearly missed. She's just an amazing person, absolutely missed, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for her, please. Thank you. We will miss you. All right, open our meeting with public comment. We have public comment this evening.
Yes, Mayor. First one up is Mary Ann Allen.
Does not sound like it's on. No.
Mary Ann Allen, 12701 Mustang Trail. I was one of the original founders of the town, but I was here long before the town was created. And we had so many great aspirations for this town. And one of them was that we were all neighbors, we treated each other fairly and honestly. And it hasn't happened through the years. It's been on and off, we've had great councils, we've had not-so-great councils, we've had councils that work great together, but I've never been so ashamed in all my 30 years of what I saw here tonight with what you did to this wonderful man, okay? That has more integrity than anybody that sits out here. And I just want to say, we had the best deal for Sunshine Ranches a few years ago. 45 acres with Carlos, he had the most magnificent equestrian properties made for that area on Griffin Road, the 45 acres. Well, Gary suggested that he give him the canal or part of the canal easement, which Carlos didn't own, and that ruined the whole deal. Now that 45 acres is up for who knows what. And we, the residents of Sunshine Ranches, we told you, we wanted that deal. We wanted that 45 acres with equestrian trails all around it. It was going to be beautiful. Now anything can come up there. Thank you, Gary, for that. Thank you very much. And I don't know why he was making such a big deal tonight when everybody understood. There is no other way to produce that property.
That item, if you're going to speak on that item, that item is on the agenda. You cannot speak on that.
Oh, okay. So one of the deals David really wanted to bring up was the 5-0 vote. And it just seems to me that Gary was making an example of the 5-0 vote on purpose because I know he likes proactive code, he's talked in favor of it, reporting our residents, and I'm not happy with that. And my last thing is, we are watching you. Thank you.
Next up is Richard Ramcharter.
Richard Ramcharter, South West 166th Avenue. Mayor, council members, good evening. I'd like to start off by saying that South Florida is ground zero for the stand against building new industrial trash incinerators and the diversion of recoverable resources currently referred to as municipal solid waste, which is garbage from landfills. What we throw out has value and we have to change the cultural mindset about these valuable resources. Zero waste involves moving from the back end of waste disposal to the front end of resource management. If a product can't be reused, repaired, rebuilt, refurbished, refinished, resold, recycled, or composted, not biocharred, then it should be restricted, redesigned, or removed from production. The only peer-reviewed internationally accepted definition of zero waste is that adopted by the Zero Waste International Alliance and it's been put forth to the United Nations. And it says, zero waste is the conservation of all resources by means of responsible production, consumption, reuse, and recovery of products, packaging, and materials without burning and with no discharges to land, water, or air that threaten the environment or human health. You know, I'd like to say that last night I was approached after the Zero Waste Advisory Board meeting and I was told that compost is not good. And I have to say, that's hogwash. You don't know what you're talking about. And that biochar is something that's what's being promoted to both Miami-Dade County Commission, the solid waste people down there, and it's supposedly going to be proposed to the Solid Waste Authority of Broward County. But I will tell you that there's a growing coalition in Florida, throughout the country, that's watching what's going on here with regards to incineration, and there's going to be a huge battle and fight to prevent this from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Next up is Gay.
Gay Chapels, I live on Dykes Road. Been here a long time. I have to agree with Mary Ann, it was rather embarrassing. But I have something to say. I read your article, Bob, and down at the bottom you referred innuendos to a lot of different things. I'd like to refresh your memory. Since I've been here since the beginning, me and the alligators and Ron, Nelson, we recruited Nelson. Why? Because we had a horrible, horrible council and corruption. I don't know that all of you remember. Maybe you were here, maybe you weren't. But anyway, we recruited Nelson and he, nobody knew him. He never was on a board, he never was here. We just plucked him out of the public, dropped him in and said, please vote for him, we need help. And we elected him and guess what? He became mayor, he cleaned it up. It took him a while, but he cleaned it up. And I want you to know, what you wrote was kind of innuendos about, look where the money's coming, what are they getting from it, who's backing who, blah, 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 blah. You know what? I'm looking at who's here now serving. Are they doing a good job? Aren't they doing a good job? If they're not, they need to be replaced. And do your homework, whoever you are, electing anybody, and you need to see what they've done for the community. If they've served before, did they do a good job or didn't they? Have they ever served the town, the community? What have they done? If they haven't, what do they plan on doing? That's what's important. I don't care where the money comes from. I can tell you, some of them are barebone. And if you remember, Freddie Fisickelli had no money and he served till the day he died and he put a paintbrush and painted his name, vote for Vince, I mean, for Freddie Fisickelli. He didn't have the money to put a lot of posters around and nobody knew him. And it was the first out of the box. So all I can tell you guys is, you are serving us. I know that's a big shock. And you have a lot of power and there's five of you up there with a lot of power. And you're doing a lot of things to a lot of us that are not good, including me. So beware. The election is in November and I hope the residents of this town will research and see what they're going to vote for. Thank you.
Next up, next up is John Garotti and then Dee Schroder.
Good evening. Is this on? I've got to say, good evening to my wife. I'll be home soon. This is a long meeting, but we do this every two weeks. You know, the pioneers of this town, we always talk about that, right? These guys were here before any one of us. I'm proud to live right next to Mary Gay, the Shepherds, the Dykes, these are all my neighbors. I'm a newcomer. I moved in in 2001. I'm proudly running for office in District 3 because I got persecuted for babysitting dogs in my own house. That's another story. You know what? That's something to be said about this town, but at the end of the day, after 12 months, I got my certificate of use, I'm able to do that. That's why I'm not upset anymore. I won, dude, I won. I got to look at it like that. I can't be angry. My wife is ecstatic that it's legal, that we don't have to, oh my God, who's outside? Is that a councilman down the street? Is that a code violation coming? No, we don't have to do that. Now imagine if you do it to a gentleman like me. Who am I, right? The Bergerons? Really? You got to pay $10 million, $5 million for loop systems where water's there? You know what this town needs? It's called term limits. You know, it comes a point where you just exhaust yourself, right? You've already said and you've done what you're going to do. And term limits will bring in new blood. Whether you guys like it or not, it's time to move on, right? You got younger residents, you got older residents, but people are fed up with the noncentrals. I go through the town charter and it's a little bit shocking of one of some of the things that are in there. You need a permit to go have a barbecue at your local grill? I mean, I can't grab John and Steve and Tony, say, hey, guys, let me show off my parks that December works so hard to make and, no, I got to go get a permit before I get the hot dogs on the grill. I read that. I mean, I hope I'm not saying that too incorrectly because I find comedy and everything, but I mean, guys, are we not in the Everglades? Are we in Pembroke Pines? Do we want to go to war with every single resident just because we can? How many Caesar Morales? Hmm, Caesar Morales, huh? The veterinarian. John Garotti, the doggy daycare gentleman, right? That's not me. I pick up the poop. My wife, Laura Zuniga Garotti, that works seven days a week to take care of half the community's dogs. We pick up all the rescue dogs from Davie, I'm sorry, from South West Ranches through Davie PD. Why? Because we care. Because we don't want them running around. They could be your pets. The other day I was at a country estates meeting, Gary said that his son takes care of dogs. I was like, holy shit, we're in the same industry. I can refer you to the certificate of use. I got one, it took me a little bit of time and money, but we got it done. I did find that funny, though. I mean, I want to meet your son or whoever that was, but guys, let's get together. Term limits, let's think about them. Seriously, you don't want me up there for 20 years? I'm not going to sound like this when I'm 68, 69 years old. I turned 50, but let's get common sense in order. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
All right, Dee Schroder followed by Guillermo Alonso. That's, Guillermo will be the last speaker. Dee Schroder and then Guillermo, yeah.
Dee Schroder, 5501 Thoroughbred Lane. Picking up signs. Be careful taking somebody's sign down. There's photos out there and that's an offense. You can get in a lot of trouble for removing political signs. John, you stole my thunder. 5-0. 5-0, gotta go. It's got to go, people. Do you guys know what Xanax is? Because if you don't, I mean, I probably, if I really tried hard, I could get you guys some. Because you need some. Like I said, the term limits, that's the key. And the bad taste came from, from you, Gary. You made everybody want term limits. You are not God, no matter how hard you try. And I will never beg for anything ever again, ever. We all have our own idiosyncrasies. We can pick anybody apart. You guys can pick me apart, I can pick you apart. That's kind of like human nature. When you're really mad, you want to pick somebody apart. When you do something wrong, you're so respected when you own it and you take it and you right the wrong. That's when you're respected. Sitting up there doesn't give you a right to be respected. You got to earn it. And sometimes it's earned and sometimes it's not. I've seen each and every one of yous do things I didn't like and I've seen each and every one of yous do things and I thought, that's pretty good. That's pretty decent that they did that. Because it is about us out here. You do get the right to make. You do get the right to make decisions, but when you don't include the people out here and you take their rights away, "Poll a permit for this, poll a permit for this." I have a guy over by me that's building a house, and he's told to take down all his evasives. $250-some thousand. Now, this is the fun part. The town, in their easement, has evasives. They got to remove them. I've got to chime in on this article. You said you get what you vote for. These signs, you made a comment in here, Bob. What's in it for them? These are essential things that we know before voting. Someone who may try to change the charter, whatever. You know, you need to read this article because I look at it as a personal thing with you and one other person running for office.
Dee, see, you need to wrap it up.
Okay. Give me one minute. It's a personal thing. Jim is running, David's running, and Steve's running. So, I know you're not addressing them. There's only one person you can be addressing, and you know what? Let it go. Don't write articles in our paper, our paper, about political crap. Thank you.
Good evening. So...
Can you just lift the mic a little bit so we can hear you?
Yeah. Okay. So, we're here, we're residents of Southwest Ranches, so we live right on Dykes, Dykes Road, closer to Griffin. And so, I'm here to read a letter for petitioning a sidewalk going in the, on the east side of the Circle Estates, extending from there all the way down to the school. And so, I would like to read the letter, if you don't mind, real quick. I'll say, "Dear council members, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to bring to your immediate attention a critical issue that profoundly impacts the safety and well-being of our community, the urgent need for a sidewalk along Southwest 160 Avenue, Dykes Road. This matter extends beyond the convenience. It is fundamental concern of safety, accessibility, and community enhancement that demands prompt and decisive action. Southwest 160 Avenue, Dykes Road, is heavily trafficked thoroughfare used daily by diverse group of pedestrians, including children walking to school, elderly citizens, and possibly some disabled citizens that are not going, not because they're scared of the trucks. So, the absence of a sidewalk forces those vulnerable groups to walk on the road, exposing them to significant danger. Numerous near-miss incidents have already occurred, and it is only a matter of time before a serious accident happens. There was an accident in the intersection of Sterling Road and Dykes Road. Then, after that, they installed a traffic light there. But this traffic light was overdue for a long time. If this, if this traffic light was installed way before this accident happened, probably the accident wouldn't have happened. Waiting for some accident to happen to then act is immoral, in my opinion. This risk is unacceptable and must be addressed without delay. The construction of a sidewalk along the street would bring transformative benefits to the community. Number one, enhanced safety. A designated pedestrian walkway will drastically reduce the risk of accidents, providing a safe path for all residents and preventing potential tragedies. Number two, improve accessibility. A sidewalk would ensure compliance with the Americans and Disability Act, ADA, making the area accessible to people with disabilities and those using strollers, thereby promoting inclusivity. Number three, increased community engagement. By encouraging more residents to walk, a sidewalk will foster healthier lifestyle and strengthen our community bonds. Number four, boosted property values. Enhanced infrastructure typically leads to increased property values, benefiting both the city and the residents.
I need you to wrap that up, please. We've already extended the time.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the information. Thank you.
That was the final speaker, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the public comment. Any board reports this evening? Is there another?
This is ULDC. Are you speaking on the public comments or on the...
Public comments.
Speaking on the public comment?
Yeah.
No?
Okay. Noel, come on up.
All right, Noel Hollingsworth.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Under the Unified Land Development Code ordinances, Section 51-20F, as in Frank, permitted uses. Permitted use number 17...
Hold the clock just for a second. So, is that, that sounds like it's going to be related to the item that's coming up later on in our agenda.
No.
Okay. Proceed.
Because coming up in your agenda is water and sewer and roof structures.
Right. Go ahead.
This is not roof structures.
Go ahead.
Section 51-20F, as in Frank, permitted uses. Permitted use number 17 allows the storage of cars, containers, and other vehicles out at the property on US 27. That is not something that was agreed to while we did the comprehensive plan under permitted uses. It is not a permitted use under the comprehensive plan. Yet I was told this evening that the permitted uses under the comprehensive plan and the permitted uses under the ULDC have no relation to either one of them. I always thought for the last 24 years that the comprehensive plan took priority over the ordinances of our town, and that if it was against, not, if it was not permitted under the comprehensive plan, it could not be permitted under the ULDC. Well, the ULDC is, does not come before the comprehensive plan. That was drawn up by staff and presented to the town council, which was passed it. Therefore, why do we have the comprehensive plan then? If the permitted uses of the comprehensive plan does not include that which is in the ULDC and has a much more broad and expanded uses than what's allowed by the comprehensive plan? Why are we doing this? You have just tonight said, "We do not need the comprehensive plan at all, or we can delete it, and we can get rid of the comprehensive plan because the ULDC is superior in all So, figure it out. It either is or it isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment?
I believe that's it, Mayor.
Come on up, Cory. Just, if you get, when you get done, if you can please fill out a form.
I'm just, under board reports, our chair wasn't there, and I'm the vice chair. The board did not discuss this, and the board did not authorize any comments on this, just for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board reports. Any board reports this evening?
Debbie Green. I'm speaking on behalf of the Ed Board. I just want to make sure everyone's aware that there are some school board member seats that are up for election. For whatever reason, they've been added to the primary ballot election and, as opposed to general election. So, we just want to make sure everyone's aware that election is coming up on August 20th, and at the Education Advisory Board meeting, our next meeting, which is this coming Monday, whatever August date that is...
August 12th.
We're going to have two of the school board members from District Two. They're going to come to the meeting. So, we have the Broward County District Two School Board Member, Tori Austin, and his opposing candidate for District Two, Rebecca Laura Thompson. They'll both be attending the meeting, and they'll be there to introduce themselves as well as, you know, speak a little on the upcoming election, answer any questions, and just, so, anyone who has any, you know, concerns, to please come out to the meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Can I...
Yeah.
I'll do my...
A different...
Okay. A different one.
Different board. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Hold on. I got to get mine.
Now, I do want to say, last time, we had like two or three people talking about a single board. We're not going to do that. We have one representative from each board, okay? Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Zero Waste Broward Task Force.
Okay.
First, I want to give a great thank you to the Bergeron Everglades Foundation that's committed $2,000 to help fund for yard signs and other methods of getting the awareness of the very real threat of incineration and waste-to-energy facility out west, adjacent to Southwest Ranches. The grassroots effort, Zero Waste Broward Task Force, is working to reach out to all the cities and towns in Broward County, and this will greatly give us the means to distribute signs well beyond Southwest Ranches and continue the fight to oppose any new waste-to-energy plants to be included in the Broward Solid Waste Authority's master plan being created today. The next meeting of the task force will be Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, August 14th, at 7:00 PM at Southwest Ranches Town Hall. The newly hired executive director, Todd Stordy, will be in attendance as our guest. This is our opportunity for him to hear firsthand from residents of Southwest Ranches and, you know, residents of the surrounding cities and our stakeholders. So, we just, we need to reach out to as many of our neighbors, friends throughout Southwest Ranches, Pembroke Pines, Weston, Davie, Cooper City, from wherever, where people can come for a meeting on this, this evening. I think this is the first time that he will be hearing directly from the residents of Broward County, and I think, we just, we need to fill this room. We need to be overflowing into the parking lot, where people can hear out there, because he needs to know how important it is that we do not want any new waste-to-energy incineration to be included in this new master plan that's being worked on today. Okay. And then, I was asked by Harold, who's not able to be here this evening, to speak on behalf of the Zero Waste Advisory Board. So, the Zero Waste Advisory Board was, it was formed just a few months ago. We've had a few meetings, and one of the standing agenda items we discussed as a board was to include innovative methods and to educate ourselves on different zero-waste disposal methods. So, we've all been educated over this past year on waste-to-energy, as it was, it was classified and sometimes is as recycling. So, we've come to know what really that is. Yes, there's pro. It disposes of a great deal of solid waste and diverts from landfill, but we also learned the tremendous harmful effects created by the flying ground ash and the other pollutants. And this method is just not acceptable. This past Tuesday, at the advisory board meeting, was another opportunity to learn about another method, the biochar, that is also characterized as a recycle and reuse method. Just to be clear, this technology was not promoted by the advisory board. It was an opportunity to learn of the pros and potential of real toxic pollutants and harms that could follow. Unfortunately, we had to table one agenda item in the essence of time, which was to begin work on the Zero Waste Community Checklist and Service Analysis Tools to move forward, to see where we can move forward with zero-waste methods in the short, middle, and long term. We asked the council to consider budgeting monies towards a zero-waste consultant to work in conjunction with the town staff and the advisory board to kind of move us in that direction so we can, you know, set us up to, for success. Just, we need to remember that the board is made up of volunteer residents and thank all those that attended this past meeting and spoke respectfully to the board and guests. It was very encouraging to see the turnout of residents wanting to put in place the implementation of zero-waste initiatives for Southwest Ranches. The meeting went on for almost two hours, and nobody was itching to get out. It just shows how important it is to the residents of Southwest Ranches to implement these zero-waste initiatives and to divert from our landfills and incineration.
Great. Thank you. So, I think you can see how involved Debbie is, reporting on three different boards. So, thank you, Debbie.
That might be part of the problem, sir. Jim Lasky, we're with the Anti-Incinerator Task Force.
No, 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 no. That was, I think that was what we just heard from. This is why I say we're not going to, now, if you're going to talk about the Ag, I thought you were coming up on, regarding the Ag.
Okay. I can handle this.
Okay, Jim. That's what I said. We're not, we're not going to have multiple reports from a single board. We have one designated reporter for each board.
Great. This actually does have to do with... Hello?
Yeah, you're good.
Hello?
You're good.
All right. This actually has to do with the Ag Department or the liaison, which I am, because it concerns the safety of our soil, our air, and our water. And I actually have a declaration here from over 120 environmental groups from around the world. And here's what they said. Biochar is a new big threat to people, land, and ecosystems, which is what I'm representing here with the agricultural for Southwest Ranches. We're supposed to protect it. And you're going to see how this relates to it, because the biochar that they claim is sequestering carbon dioxide, these claims are inconsistent. They're not provable. And then, the other thing that they talk about is claims that the industrial charcoal is the same as terra prita, which I think you were thinking that they were talking about the other night. It's not the same. This was developed by the indigenous Amazonian people thousands of years ago. They cannot reproduce that system. This is an industrial charcoal that has all kinds of, well, let's, let's go on it. The process of making biochar, charcoal, and energy, which is called pyrolysis, can result in dangerous soil, air, and water pollution, and it also releases dioxins and furans. They also treat sewage and sludge, and some of these people around the country are violently opposed to biochar. They've been putting it, they violently opposed it, and they have stopped biochar from being planned for their cities. So, here is how it, how it relates to us, because we're talking about environmental degradation of our soils, our air and water, and our agricultural methods, which is the big farming, which strips all the nutrients out of the soil. So, what they say is small-scale, and this is where we come in, because we're going to be small-scale farming here. Small-scale agroecology, ecological farming and protection of natural ecosystems are the effective way to mitigate the impact of climate change. These proven alternatives should be fully supported, not risky, unfounded technologies promoted by vested commercial interests. And that's what we listened to the other night. But the most important thing is, what would you do to me if I came here and lied to every one of you to your face? Because you are the representatives of we, the people. You're supposed to be looking out for our best interests. And at that meeting, the chairperson of Zero Waste lied to all of you. He lied to all of us. And I'm going to give you the exact wording, because we have it on audio. All right? And I don't like being lied to. I don't think any of you either do as well, and I've never lied to any one of you in all the 30 years I've worked over here. So, anyway, we were asking during the meeting, where are the facilities of the bio... of the biochar that we could look at in the United States? Because they want to quote a lot of the things from outside of the country, where we don't have really good scientific data. And Jim asked of the Speaker and Harold, who in the United States is successfully managing your charcoal processes now? Who can we look to? And immediately Harold said, Belle Glade. It's only an hour away. Well, luckily, Jim checked into it the next day. Belle Glade opposed it, and it was, and it was withdrawn two years ago. Central Florida, which was also said, hey, we got something in Central Florida. The people there went nuts. They violently opposed the building of the biochar facility. They fired their town council, hired a new one, and they're not allowing it to be built. So I'm letting you all know that what we heard was basically, well, if you wanted to buy a bridge in Brooklyn, I'd go to that guy, okay? Literally. We heard a lot of hogwash, unsubstantiated claims. And what confuses me is, I could understand if this was on the advisory task force, which brings up, hey, they're going to be bringing this up to Miami and Dade as a potential zero-waste alternative, which it's not. It's not included in the definition of zero-waste. Nothing that's burning, and burning our resources. So.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
We're going to be prepared if they bring this up to the Solid Waste Authority or to Miami-Dade. We have the facts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other Board reports? Seeing none, Board reports are closed. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I can tell I'm real popular tonight, Bob. Thank you for taking some of the heat. I appreciate that. Just a couple of things I need to get out of the way. We have our Flowmobile here on the 28th of August. Just make an appointment through Deborah at the office, if you need, if you need to use our facilities. It'll be here at Town Hall. The recycling stickers that attach to the back, to the top of the recycling cans, saying the do's and the don'ts are in the back, ready to go, if you need one. We have the photo contest from Rural Arts Board for the calendar. Submissions are all the way up through the 9th of September. We have a really great presentation going on tomorrow at 9:30 at the Lake Hancock and Griffin. It's the Aidan Perry Life Saving Ring installation. It's going to be going on throughout our town. And this would be like the inaugural, inaugural promotion for it. Those of you who would like to go, it's at 9:30 in the morning. And Hancock and Griffin. And it's, I don't know if you were planning on talking about it, Steve, or not. Okay. Basically, what it is, is Aidan Perry, a young man, saw a car go into the water. He drove, he dove into the water to rescue the driver. And unfortunately, he perished, also with the driver. His mother started the Aidan Perry Foundation to put life-saving rings, like the kind you see around pools and on ships such, around bodies of water that can be used in case somebody goes into the water. Instead of having to try to swim out to them, you can throw them a life ring. These, these are the standard U.S. Coast Guard life rings. They're light, and they come with like 50 feet of cord, which can be, that you can pull somebody in with. So we're going to be putting those around various water bodies located throughout the town. And large water bodies will have more than one, so it'll benefit, if, should, hopefully prevent a tragedy, you know, from happening. We have the Budget Workshop on Tuesday, the 13th, at 7:00 PM. It's going to be coming this coming Tuesday. It'll be here in at Town Hall. Very important. This is your money, as everybody is reminding me and the rest of the council tonight. And hopefully, we'll have a good attendance. Usually, it's sparsely attended, unfortunately, but hopefully, we'll have better attendance as we go along. Some comments were made tonight regarding certain things, like the 40 acres that went on about a year ago. I'm not going to mention any names. I'm not going to say anything other, other than probably people were not aware of. But at one time, the 40 acres was completely zoned for one-acre homes. Luckily, we had Richard and Keith, who were able to get us out of that through some very good contract negotiations and settlements. And then further on with the new buyers of the, of the area, we were getting several iterations of what was going on, of different buyers and sellers repeatedly. And one of the most significant things that came out of that whole episode was that we came up with a new zoning classification, which we call A3, where it's a 2.5-acre minimum. There's no net involved in that. And that came out of that, which, that whole episode. So just want to make mention of the positive things that happened during that time. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. I'd like to go next.
I guess. All right, I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, folks. Thanks for coming out. Looks like we got a good audience tonight. When Debbie came up and spoke about this zero-waste and incinerator, I don't know how many, how many of you folks are aware that Broward County has expressed an interest, or actually a very well-founded interest from their perspective, to put an incinerator, burns garbage, burns whatever they put in there on Sheridan Street, right where the old landfill is. That's less than a mile from many Southwest Ranches homes. Every member of this council has voted opposing it. I cannot emphasize how important attending the meeting next week on the 14th is. To come out and make your point, that if you do not want an incinerator, show up at this meeting on Wednesday night and express the interest, because the Executive Director is the man that's heading it up, that will be leading this whole effort. So really, please come out and pack this room. Tell your friends that this is the one chance we're going to have to make a point. No incinerator. We do not want this. Moving on, I think Debbie had mentioned the issue with a zero-waste consultant. I would like to look into that, because it is kind of important for the future of the town. If we're going to be implementing recycling measures, that we have a consultant that's going to help us guide that with the checklist for recycling. Now, speaking of recycling, I kind of repeat this, because it's kind of really important. When you put things in your recycling bin, things that do not belong in there are styrofoam, like if your food containers, those do not belong in the recycling bin. Pizza boxes do not belong in the recycling bin. That oil contaminates the cardboard, and it's no good. It's garbage. Plastic bags, plastic bags clog the sorter at the recycling facility where they sort the various materials. And periodically, they have to shut the machine down for like two hours. So two guys go in there with a knife and clean it up. Now, I, I know the town has expressed an interest in sending out an email to all the residents. And I, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we can get a, if this would be something maybe, instead of just saying the town asks you to come, can, would the council be supportive of having an email that actually says, Mayor Bray Cruz and the council are asking you to come to this meeting, to emphasize how important each and every one of us are on this?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It's a great idea.
Gary, like that?
Can you repeat it?
All right. This meeting next week with Zero Waste, with the executive.
I heard all that in the bathroom. It's actually got very better.
An email, email going out to all the residents on constant contact, saying, Mayor Bray Cruz and the council members would like for you to come, or asking you to come out to this meeting, to make it more personal from every one of them.
Are you talking about an email blast?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
All right. That's great. Let's see, I found out a couple of days ago that the DRW magazine everybody's been reading, not going to be circling around anymore. I get the benefit of having a last article. But yeah, the DRW will not be in circulation much longer. So let you guys know that. And then, let's see, before I get into my last issue, oh, Deborah Goffrose. Before I even heard of Southwest Ranches, I was working in the office of then-Senator Howard Foreman in Tallahassee. And, you know, Howard Foreman's the reason that I'm here. He brought me down here, got into law school through helping his office. But when I was in Howard's office, I met Deborah Goffrose in Tallahassee. And she made an impression on me then. Little did I know, I come here, Southwest Ranches, there's Deborah Goffrose. And, you know, I remembered her. It's just something that you don't. I spoke with Deborah Goffrose. I actually visited her Sunday before she passed. She called me up and said, David, can you bring me one of your shirts? I said, sure. Came over, brought her a shirt. I texted her, just as the Zen Elite Equestrian dressage team was starting to perform. I had called, texted her, let her know that it was going on. And she said, and her response to me was, thank you. That was the last text I got from her. And, I mean, she was a wonderful, wonderful woman for our town. She will be missed. And then last, I'm going to go into my monthly Law and Order report, go through various citations across the town. We have a lot now. It's picking up. District One, there were 12 citations issued. Five of those were speeding, and one on 210. That was one interior road out of those 12. District Two, we had 22 citations issued. 16 of those 22 were speeding, six on the interior roads. District Three, we're getting up there. 58 citations issued. Of those 58, 51 were speeding, and 30 of those 51 are interior roads. And last, of course, outdoing everybody, District Four, 84 citations issued, 73 of those 84 speeding, and 24 on the interior roads. Up this 24, 15 were on Sterling Road alone. So Sterling Road's still getting a lot of speeders, and I hope we can work with that. That wraps it up for me. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to touch a little bit on what David just mentioned. The task force that the Safety and Traffic Board approved, and the town has a budget for, did come up with a budget for. This is our officers who spend an extra two, maybe three hours of overtime after they're off duty. They sign up for this detail. This detail enforces traffic inside the boundaries. Not out on Griffin, not out on Sheridan. They're inside the communities writing tickets. That's their main objective, is to slow the speeders down. We've had great success with it. It started in July, I believe, and will run through November or December. I forget.
Initially, September 30th, then we'll reevaluate.
Right. But this is a task force that was developed, or talked about and approved, that will be inside. It'll be on those streets that are 25 mile an hour, not out on Griffin. A lot of tickets written out in Griffin. That's easy pickings. But inside, that's it. Small Business Administration. I mentioned to you last month that the Small Business Administration had what they call disaster loans. And they have a center open, they have two or three centers around Broward County. They deal with the flooding that took place back in March. And if you're interested in a loan, they're for businesses, homeowners, renters, private organizations, their economic injury, their home business, anything like that, that you may feel that you were damaged, or hurt, or whatever, and caused you a problem, contact this Small Business Administration. Their email address is lending, L-E-N-D-I-N-G. sba.gov. The application for acceptance, or whatever, the application to get approval ends the end of August. So I'd encourage you, it's, it's a loan. It's not free money. It's a loan, but it should help. So if you're interested in that, you know, please take it. I'd like to talk a little bit also about Ms. Green. She said that she, you heard her speak on two different advisory boards. We do have two groups here in town. One is an advisory board. The other is a grassroots effort by the homeowners and residents here in Southwest Ranches to stop the incinerator. That's the Zero Waste Task Force. The other one is the Zero Waste Advisory Board. That's an actual advisory board of the town. That advisory board has a couple members on it that attended classes through Zoom for a couple months, two or three months, two or three times a week, hours at a time, taking one test after the other. And I'm very proud to say that they got their certificates and they passed the course. And they are here to help us learn how to recycle. They're not here to promote, nor will they promote biotech, incineration, any of that. They're here to help us learn how to recycle. What to put in the can, what not to put in the can, how you can use that, what you can do with it. Reuse, recycle, refurbish, all right? Reuse, recycle, refurbish. That's what they're here for. They're going to help us understand as a town what we need to do to lead the example, so that we can get to, there's no such thing as zero-waste, but we can reduce the amount that goes in those landfills without incineration and without biotech and all. This group does not, and neither does the town, encourage biotech or any of those other things. That was just simply a tool that was talked about. Simply a tool that was talked about. Now, if it's brought up to the task force, that's a different entity. But this group here is a group of volunteers that are working hard to try to help educate the people here on recycling, reuse, and refurbish. And last, I'd like to speak that I've heard that there's been a lot of political signs that have been removed, or taken down, or disappeared. Well, I happened to be the victim of that this past week. I got a call yesterday. A gentleman had been away for three or four days, and he called me, said, Jim, did you take your sign down? I said, no, I did not. He said, Jim, your sign is gone. I said, beg your pardon? He said, it's gone. I said, we've had some bad winds. He said, Jim, your sign is gone. The poles in the ground that were driven in the ground, the stakes that held them in and so forth, were all removed. Everything was gone. And he said, but you've got to remember one thing. I said, what is that? He said, my company specializes in cameras. I said, what do you, I said, yeah, yeah, they do, because they put my cameras in for my house. He said, and we have two cameras that cover the front yard. So we will have to look back over those three days to see who came into the yard and who took the signs. So I will be spending the weekend at his house. We've got probably, I think he said, 102 hours' worth of video to look at. Looking forward to it. Even if you double-speed it or triple-speed it, you're going to be there for hours. But I'm going to try to find out who it is that's going around and taking the political signs and disposing of them, you know? That is, as someone mentioned, a crime. That is something that is punishable. And if they're caught, I will punish them, all right? So let's don't do this. Let's be neighborly. That's all I hear. Let's be neighborly. Let's do that. Leave the signs alone. Run on your own merits. Don't take somebody's sign down. Don't hide somebody's sign in the bushes. That's childish, all right? Let's be neighbors and, and run on your own merits. Let the signs stay where they may. And like I said, I'm going to spend all weekend, Saturday, Sunday, looking at that. And we'll see what happens after that. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Bob?
Good evening, folks. Thanks for coming out tonight. I wanted to spend a minute on Deborah Goffrose as well. I wanted to spend a minute on Deborah Goff-Rose as well. We've called her friend for 30 years or so. And I could tell you a million stories about Red, because she was a really fun person. She's one of those kind of people that, when she walks into the room, everything lit up. Everybody got a smile because she always had funny things to say, and a lot of heartfelt things to say. I remember when my kids were little, my oldest was 12 at the time, and the other was five. She calls me up, Bob, I got miniature bunnies. Okay, they were babies. Bring the kids over. They'd never seen, they were these little tiny bunnies that were full grown. I'd never seen them before either, but the kids loved it, they wanted them immediately, no but, you know, they went over to help her take care of them. Later in years, Red stopped working. By the way, I don't know if most people know this, she was code enforcement for Arbida when they were building Weston. And she's the kind of code enforcement person you want to come over to, because she's always got a big smile. She'll tell you what you're doing wrong in such a nice way, and you'd be more than happy to fix whatever the problem was. So she had the right temperament. It's a tough job, but she took everything in stride. But, you know, towards the end, she was helping out senior citizens, she was, you know, just kind of driving people around if they needed it. We, I asked her one day, hey, do you know anybody who does pet sitting? Because we were using this pet sitting group, and they kind of moved out of the area, so we needed somebody. She started feeding my chickens and taking care of the dogs every time we went on vacation, and we're gonna have to find somebody new because she's not replaceable. But, you know, it was such a sad thing to hear last Friday when it came up, because she's my age, a little bit, a year or two older than me, and I, it, your own fate kind of hits you in the face at that point, when you're looking at somebody who's a good friend that you've known forever, and all of a sudden, she's out of our life. We will miss her. Everybody who I know that knows her will miss her. It's, it was tears at my house when I let the family know. So if you, if you know, if you knew her, say a prayer for her. She'll be missed, as the mayor said earlier. I did want to cover some of the comments that we heard from some of our neighbors tonight. They were very rich. You know, they're, they're calling us not representing our neighbors, not representing the community. Nothing can be further from the truth. What we can always count on Councilmember Jablonsky to do is to try to look out for the things we may not have caught. Now, the Bergerons didn't want to agree, they can call it contract zoning, there's a bunch of different things you could call it, but what I called, what I think of it as, and Gary's done this before, he goes for, he goes for that last inch to try to get the best deal for the town. And he's gotten pushback before, and in other scenarios, he's, he's been successful. So, you know, those who are jumping up saying he's corrupt, there's something out there, it's not. The other part that was really rich is, is how we're passing all of these laws and rules to impose on the community. One of the speakers who was on the council at the time voted for the 5-0, she and the former mayor voted for the 5-0. I wasn't on the council at that point. Why, why now are they opposed to it? It's kind of interesting. When you sit up here, you have to listen. When you're out there, and I sat in one of those front chairs here and in our former town halls for almost 20 years before I was elected to the council. And I've heard all these people go through it. You know, I was accused of going after one person in my article, and by the way, to those who spoke about the article that it was in the DRW and is upcoming in the next council, I want you to know who you, you can look up these guys, you can come to meetings and find out who they are. But people don't always vote for people that they know about. And my, I encourage everybody to look into, look into these guys that are running, and look into their opponents. They want to talk about politics? All right, so two weeks after I was elected the first time, six years ago, I got a notice from the Florida Election Commission. The little group we're, we're talking about here turned around and created 13 charges and filed them with the Florida Election Commission. That put me through six months of hell. You know what it's like when you have investigators from the state of Florida calling you? I mean, I was so excited I got elected, but all of a sudden now, I got investigators calling me. You know what the investigators came to the conclusion? I'd made one mistake on a, one of my election reports, one of my financial reports. And the way the law reads, and it's for good reasons, if you willingly or unknowingly file a, you know, an erroneous campaign report, you're responsible for it. Okay, I paid a $300 fine. But, you know, the people that are accusing us of playing politics did that to me. Two days after I got elected, code enforcement showed up on my property, called by one of the people that was speaking tonight. Is that politics? I don't know. I thought it was pretty nasty from people that I'd known forever. So I'm glad they brought this up tonight, because I hope you all go back and read what I wrote. It's important that you know who you're voting for. The Sun Sentinel doesn't cover our elections anymore. The first time I ran, they, they invited me down, you know, whether they were gonna endorse me or not, they asked me a ton of questions, they endorsed me over my opponent. They don't do that anymore at our level. You've gotta know who you're voting for. And, you know, am I picking on one person? No, we have two criminals running for office. That's what I want everybody to know. And I'm not gonna say anything more about them, because I've spoken. If you want to hear what I've said, go out to YouTube. But the point is, do your homework for the upcoming election, because there's a lot more that meets the eye. And, you know, then they get their friends talking about how bad we are, and, you know, how good these folks are. Term limits. Term limits come up every time they hate somebody in the back of the room here. We've heard that so many times, and I loved Astronaut's answer, I guess that's the last time it came up, or one of the other times it came up. He said the voters create term limits. If you're doing a bad job, they toss you out. If you're doing a good job, they keep you. The mayor is, what, 16 years as an elected official? Gary, roughly the same, 16 years?
Fifteen.
So, you know what? Term limits? We don't need them here. If the voters keep returning them to office based on their track record, that's the best kind of term limits in my book. I really, term limits? I mean, I'm not here as a professional politician. If that were my goal, I'd be in Tallahassee or I'd be in Washington. We're all here to serve the community. Nothing more, nothing less. And if you know what it takes to serve our community, the folks that are saying, we don't respect the community, we do all the nonsense, you're hearing very, very much spin. And again, I'm sorry I gotta be up here saying it, but there's no press to cover us anymore. So, thank you for your time tonight, folks, and thank you for hearing me out.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, I know we've gone a little long here, I will try and limit my comments. Couple things, based on what we've heard already. The, we had Noel brought up the UDLC versus the comp plan. I do think we need to bring those two into alignment. Obviously, the comp plan is, is the governing document there, we need to bring those two into alignment. I'll just leave it at that. Couple of, something that I wanted to announce that's great news, we have been doing our chess events for the community, really been excited about a lot of the things that we're just starting this year to get our youth more involved, and one of the things was we started a chess event. Well, we're now officially part of the countywide chess challenge, and so our first event here in our town hall for the mayor's chess challenge, which is countywide, is actually on October 19th, so feel free to put that on your, on your calendar. It's a great event. We've done our local chess events here and had a good group, and it's just great to see the families come out for that. So, encourage you to do that. You know, it's election season, I don't know what to say. I have a very well-seasoned opponent, and, and I think that, you know, certainly, there was about things that somebody had criminal records. My opponent does not have a criminal record or anything like that, so you have a good choice. You know, I stand behind my record, I'm sure she stands behind her record, and I do encourage you to do your research. The last thing I want to touch on, and I know we've talked about it a few times, but it's so, so important that I also want to touch on it. On the 14th, the Zero Waste Board, I am fortunate to be on the SWA Executive Board, which is countywide, which is, we're doing the master plan for how to deal with our waste for the next 40 years. It's a huge task of work, but we're building a consensus that does not include an incinerator, which is not where we were eight, 10 months ago. So we've made huge progress there, looking forward to doing that, but we have the opportunity. So, so this, this board is putting together the plan, the 40-year master plan on what we're gonna do with our waste disposal for the next generation and a half, right? So we have put together a team, we've hired a consultant, and we've hired an executive director that is gonna head up this whole process. He is going to be here on the 14th, okay? So we need to fill this room. This is your opportunity to really get your voices be heard by the guy who's at top and, and really make an impact. So please, 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 put that on your calendar for the 14th. All right, with that, I will stop and get on with our regular, or our next item anyway, which is legal comments.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick legal comment regarding the settlement of a appeal of a code enforcement case with the Massan's. So we did settle that. They dismissed the appeal, and in turn, we dismissed the code enforcement case stemming from a noise violation from a neighbor, and I believe it was a $750 fine, so.
Great.
That matter's been settled.
Perfect.
And that's the end of the legal comments.
Great, thank you. Administrative comments?
Yeah, I'll be very brief, Mayor. Just two quick things, alluding to something that has already been brought up. So regarding the mayor's chess challenge, we have some flyers on the back tables. If anybody's interested, there's more information on those back tables for the, for the chess event. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on was related to the Aidan Perry Foundation. Sarah Perry, Aidan's mom, will actually be at the event tomorrow, so if anyone wants to meet her, she's a dynamic woman and took a tragedy and turned it into a positive outcome, so she will be at the event tomorrow at 9:30 tomorrow morning.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element Policy 1.8-P, and the Performance Standards for the U.S. Highway 27 Business Category in Part II of the Future Land Use Element entitled "Permitted Uses in Future Land Use Categories pertaining to Potable Water and Sanitary Sewer Facilities Required to Serve Development Designated U.S. Highway 27 Business Category on the Future Land Use Planning Map," providing transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency and other review agencies defined in Florida statutes 163-3184-1C, providing for recertification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion on this item from the board? So this, everything that we, in the LPA is gonna be brought over to this meeting, is that correct? Is that how that works? Or do we need to repeat the comments?
The information is in there. I would advise you, obviously, to make a new motion, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, no, well, we have a motion and a second. I'm just, normally, all the LPA comes over, and I just wanted to, if that's true, I wanted to make that statement.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, so all those comments from the LPA have moved over.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Right.
Well, no, I think we need to amend this motion as well.
Okay.
Okay. So, Carrie, you made it. You okay with the amendment, which is basically to remove the roof structure deletion?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the second, I think was you, yes, okay. All right, so that's the adjusted motion. Is there any additional comment from the council? Seeing none, is there any additional comment from the public?
In a very similar fashion, we're just gonna reiterate all the comments that I made myself, Mr. Ron Bergeron, Lonnie Bergeron, and Stephen Waldman from the LPA reiterated here, and just thank you for the robust discussion, urge an affirmative vote, and thank you so much for your service.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, Definition of Terms, Section 010-030, Terms Defined, Article 45, Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-030, General Provisions, and Article 55, Manufacturing and Industrial Districts. Section 55-030, General Provisions pertaining to the measurement of height, and particularly the height of fences, walls, hedges, and structures other than buildings and signs, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Yes, sir. Listening, sitting in on those meetings and stuff, this is something that, you know, has affected some of the neighbors, depending on where the wall goes up or the berm goes up, and I think that Jeff has done a great job helping the comp board and stuff come up with this regulation. I think it'll be a well-deserved one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? I'll just add one comment on there. You know, comments were made earlier in the meeting where it was kind of alluded to that the council's not listening to the residents. Let me tell you, this change is specifically and totally because residents came with an improvement to, to the code, and we said, great idea, let's do it, and here it is, we're voting on it tonight, so. Any, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Sunrise providing water service to 5560 Hancock Road, real property lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Sunrise, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additional comments or questions from the council?
Just another water provision?
I know. I'm keeping my mouth shut. All right. Is there any public comment on the item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number 11, please.
Item 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the Neighborhood Safety Grant Award in the amount of $35,287.82 to the Circle S Estates Homeowners Association, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023-2024 adopted town budget, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Great.
Motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item. I'd like to say a couple things on this item. I am, I'm pleased to see this item is here. I see, pleased to see the residents from that community also here. It's awesome. This is, this is an important item. We, a number of years ago, I started these safety grants, these public safety grants for situations just like this, where residents had issues and improvements that they wanted to put in place, and, and were willing even to partner with the town to do it. It may not be things that the town would normally do, but we can build a partnership together, and we can do important things that improve our, the life for our residents and, and add to the infrastructure of our town. And so I am pleased to see this item before us. I know that the folks from Circle S have done a lot of work on this item, and it's gone around, gone around the racetrack, maybe the Circle S racetrack a few times, but we're ended up in a very good place here. I feel good about what's here. I think this is going to be a good improvement to what you all have there, make your community safer, fewer disruptions of cars coming through and whatever. So I'm really excited to be able to partner with you on this.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just say something, I know that there's many residents here from Circle S, and I know that they have a representative that wants to make a brief presentation.
Perfect. Perfect.
So, if I can introduce Stephanie Duquesne Welsh, who's gonna be speaking on behalf of the Circle S residents, and she has a, a quick presentation to show.
Great.
Good evening, members of the council, our town attorney, administration, and to our fellow community members. My name is Stephanie Duchesne Welsh, and I'm the vice president of the Homeowners Association for Circle S Estates. I'm joined by other board members who have assisted in leading this very important initiative, Gareth Reese, Anthony Tetram, Nilda Toro. Um, our president, Mohammed Abid, is traveling and couldn't be here with us this evening, but also sends his regards and appreciation of your time and attention in allowing us to present and request support for our safety grant. I know, this is a PowerPoint. It seems like it's going to be really long and detailed. It's not. If you could just provide us just some time to just go through why we're here and what we need.
Go to the next one, there you go.
Who we are. We are forty-two, and, and just like other properties here in Southwest Ranches, multimillion-dollar, we only have one acres, most people have way more than that. Um, we're located right off of I-75 at the corner of Griffin and Dykes Road, providing very easy access to thieves from all over Florida. We're a diverse group of families, um, with and without children, retirees, working professionals, stay-at-home parents, stay-at-home moms, stay-at-home dads. We compose of all backgrounds. What we need, safety is the cornerstone of any thriving community. It's not solely about the absence of crime, but also about creating an environment where every resident feels secure and confident in their daily lives, inside and outside of their homes. Our application outlines two critical safety measures that not only will benefit our residents in Circle S Estates, but the entire Southwest Ranches community, and that's what our primary goal is. What we need, these are, we're asking for assistance from the town for us to get license plate readers that will be placed at the entrance, which is on common land, uh, because it's the city's easement. So, it will serve not only Circle S Estates, but all of Southwest Ranches. Uh, the LPRs will integrate with the City of Davie Police Department, which is crucial to its monitoring of unauthorized vehicles. We're hoping that our LPRs serve as a deterrent to entering into our community, and it will also help other communities nearby, because once they leave our neighborhoods, they're going right ne- to the next neighborhood, Sunshine Ranches, Roaming Oaks, et cetera. So, this is just some details as to what the LPRs will look like. Secondly, we're asking for traffic delineators, and as you can see, um, to the right, that there, the two yellow, um, indicators. We've had major problems with U-turns. We're not here to ask for sidewalks, per se, it's not about that, but if we can just get these traffic crash delineators, there's cement blocks with the dividers. Um, I witnessed a golf cart on its side, right after our sign, facing Griffin, on its side, because a car was coming in, and they're making this large U-turn right in the middle of the intersection. School starts Sunday, uh, on Monday, school starts. I've seen, and so have the other residents, we've got walkers, um, scooters, bicycles, lots of golf carts, and you don't stand a chance, especially with the speeding that's going on. Thank you very much for that helpful information. You don't stand a chance when these cars are coming very fast, right off of Griffin, they're turning right down to Dykes, and they know it's there, so they bust that U-turn. Many of us have almost been struck. This is going to be dangerous, and we really need to stop the massive U-turn and traffic problems that we have in the entrance. We have to protect our children, um, we have to protect our residents, and this is a way for both Dykes, as well as the entrance of Circle S, to be protected. Uh, the quote for that amount is also within our proposal. If you look at this video that I'm about to play, um, just one second, it's notable because it's exactly one year ago today. It's August eighth, twenty twenty-three, and it wasn't just my house. Lots of other houses on this very night experienced the fear that my family did, and I share this with you now, and I'm almost getting emotional because my kids are here. If you could just play it for a second. That's my house, you just, it's, just click that play button at the bottom, the yellow, just once. Maybe a technical difficulty, let's see. Do you wanna see if I can click it?
There.
Oh, there it is, there it is, it's fine. It was just moving. Yeah. Only once.
Perhaps you want to describe the scene?
Right, well, I'll describe the scene. Why don't I click it and see? Okay, hold on one second. Here it is, it's playing, right here. Okay, so you can see thief number one goes right into my garage, and at the time, we have the entrance from the laundry room. Thief number two goes right into my garage, and it's a quick twenty seconds. This is them leaving. They pick up my son's new, like, spider rider, and the fear that we had was them being able just to walk right into my house, and we're all sleeping. Um, my door was locked, that's Cadillac Escalade, my door was locked. They actually had a reader to be able to open the door, and I went through the, the town of Davie, um, they're reading cars, especially the American cars, you can break into them very easily. Um, my husband's door was not locked, which is how they got into the garage, with the garage clicker. But a year ago is what happened to me, and neighbors got together and tried to look at their cameras, and it was just too far, we could not see the license tag on the car. Not to say that, you know, there was one on there, or it would have been stole, you know, it wasn't stolen, but just the camera just being there, being able to capture, just giving us more information, would have really helped. Another why we need it, this is Nilda's house, and she has an Escalade too, they seem to, like, Escalades. So, this is the day that her car was stolen directly from her driveway, and if you see the first, let me use my red pointer. Oh, oh, went for too far, one second. Okay. Okay, so, uh, in the first photo, that's the person running into her car, um, her car was not on, they just jumped in, started the car, and left. And then, in the second photo, there's a blue car that's waiting, um, right there in the corner, and we were, and, and these people are coming from all over Florida, we're right off the highway. They have access to where we are, they know that we're new homes. Nilda's car ended up somewhere north in West Palm, they caught it the same day. Um, you know, different people's items are ending up anywhere in the state, and we really need, as a community, to get a hold of this, and to at least provide deterrent measures to try to stop this. Nilda did get her car back, thank God. Okay. This is, this is our last video. Let's see if it'll play. This is another, another one of our, um, and I don't know if this one's going to play 'cause I don't see the, the measure at the bottom. This is another one of our residences there. Okay, yep. Now, this, this is bold, because you're, and this is the same night that my house was broken into, again, August eighth, um, just one year ago today. Um, so, they have thieves that come out of the car, they're, they're waiting right there, they pop her trunk, they take her shopping bags, this is right across, just on the other side. There's forty-two homes, and each corner of our circles were all broken into. So, they take her shopping bags, okay? Now, you see them go back to the car, and they're standing there for a while, and pretty gutsy, because they get out of the car and they come back, because they're not, there's one coming right back. This is what our community has had to deal with, on a, and now there's two of them. And, and her cameras are there, and we've called the police, and it's really difficult because it literally is almost less than a minute. By the time you get out there, they're gone. We were texting each other at night, like, "Hey, I think somebody just broke into my car, you guys watch out." We all went outside. We couldn't find anyone. They drive away, they're probably headed to my house right after, 'cause I live right down the other side of the street. Okay, um, now, this is a scene of what just happened. The first photo, um, is the Circle S tree. When you drive into our community, there is a staple, there's a beautiful oak tree that's surrounded by greenery, and one day, last week, we noticed that the tree stem was completely down, and about twenty minutes later, somebody texted, "It's actually completely off and on the road." This is a safety hazard. This could have fell on any one of our kids. My kid plays basketball, goes down that street all the time, he rides his bike, the other kids in the neighborhood, they're all always together, and what happened was a unauthorized huge mega truck came in, realized that he was in the wrong community, and made a huge U-turn, um, damaged our sprinklers, damaged our grass, Nilda ended up calling the police to try to get a police report. Uh, one of our neighbors who lives in, uh, Lot One was able to catch, you know, what happened, because we were wondering what happened to this tree. Um, he was able to catch it, and we saw, you know, the semi truck hit the tree, you know, back up a little bit, run over our flowers, mess up our sprinklers, and just keep going, and it was so tall that the branch fell down. Anyone could have been near it at that time. If we would have had our license plate readers, we would have been able to make a claim, catch this commercial company, go through it, you know, have some resources to make a claim to fix this. But right now, it's coming out of our pockets for somebody that shouldn't have been there. In conclusion, the significance of this grant can't be overstated. It's not merely about installing equipment or putting up signs or barriers, it's about sending a message that we, as a community, are proactive in safeguarding our homes and our families. It's about fostering a sense of trust and cooperation between the residents and the local authorities. The support and involvement of our residents in this initiative has been overwhelming, as you can see, many of us are here tonight. Many of them have voiced their concerns over the rise in incidence of crime and vandalism in our neighborhood and the surrounding areas. They're eager to see these safety measures implemented, knowing that it will enhance their quality of life and peace of mind. Furthermore, and it's important to note, that timely completion of this project within sixty to ninety days of commencement demonstrates our commitment and readiness to act quickly to protect our community. This successful implementation of these measures will not only address the immediate safety concerns, but also enhance the overall well-being of our neighborhood and all of Southwest Ranches. So, in conclusion, we thank you for your time, we urge the council to approve our safety grant and our application, um, to help us create a safer and more secure environment for ourselves and the rest of our residents in Southwest Ranches. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Very good. Is there, is there any further public comment on this item?
I have some comments, Mayor. I have some comments.
Noel Hollingsworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. Is this on? Yep, it's good. This is not to say anything about the people who are here tonight, because they're residents, and they are victims of the developer, as far as the stanchions. I totally support the cameras. It's the stanchions that I have a problem with. When we were doing the approval of the site plan, this came up as to the U-turn that was going to be taking place there, because they have the left turn lane. And if I remember right, I could be wrong, maybe one of you will correct me, the developer said, "Yes, we will expand the entrance so they can make the U-turns."
Yep.
If we put the stanchions up there, where they can't make the complete turn, they're going to have to make the left turn into the development, go down to the roundabout, go around the roundabout, and come back out, or pull into a driveway and then back out, which is totally unacceptable. They will be making the left turn into the development, going to the roundabout, coming back out, because the developer did not make the entrance way as they knew and accepted to do when we gave them the approval as a town. They knew they had to expand the entrance way, or the U-turns. The left turn lane will continue to be the U-turn lane.
Yep.
If you put the stanchions, then you're gonna have to put it on down to where the roundabout. So, we got that problem.
Thank you, Noel.
And that is something that I hope you can somehow alleviate this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. John Garrati, Hundred and Sixty-Second Avenue. Um, about a year ago, I witnessed on the corner of Sterling and Dykes, I was sitting there with, uh, my neighbor Kirk, we were observing a street takeover, right there at the elementary school. It was an absolute disaster. I didn't know what was going on, I thought it was a TV show or something. So, we're saying, like, what is this? They made this production, a lot of these guys with these, you know, off-road vehicles and on-road vehicles, they literally took over right in front of Mary Gay's property at Hawks' Bluff Elementary. They used all the entire parking lot. Watch where I'm going with this with Circle S. So, I'm sitting there watching, observing, of course, DVPD was called, they came out, but there was literally a hundred and fifty bikes, there was a hundred cars, they had a film, they made a little skit out of it, right? So, I had my truck, and I'm like, "All right, let me, what can I do?" Right? Nothing, I just started driving down the street, and when I parked in front of Hawks' Bluff, observing this craziness after I got off the phone with DVPD, I just started, like, following the traffic out, 'cause they saw the police come and they drove out. Guess where they went? They all went into Circle S, and you can hear them, "Hey, this is the," they were talking about the crimes that they commit in that neighborhood because of the accessibility off the highway. I mean, that's the location of the neighborhood, but I heard this, and I'm like, "Holy shit." Then I'm sitting in the, um, town hall here, and I met Mo, the president of your HRA, and I told him, I said, "Listen, I observed literally twenty-five ATVs roaring through there, just, and they're talking about the neighborhood of the easy access." I think DVPD was able to get one of the guys, 'cause they're not allowed to stop him, but it is, the positioning of that neighborhood needs protection. Those residents there, there were several in here that, you know, they were freaked out, like, "Look, that is not, that's not cool, that, that's dangerous." So, whatever we can do to get that community a little safer, and I know that, that used to be, um, horse farm and all that, but U-turn or not, that, these guys need protection in whatever way we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, my, 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 my. Okay, there used to be a great horse farm there, and these people are the victims, and Neil is right, they didn't do what they were supposed to do, the developers. So, now, these poor people are victims, and they're in our town, and now it's our problem. I have a question to you, I don't remember what the number is, but how come they don't have a gate there, where they, nobody can go in there, period?
That's a great question, we asked for that.
I'm, I'm just asking the council if that could be a gated community, because if it can, we don't have the, look, let's be fair, and let's be honest, we don't have the police force to protect them, we don't. And they've got pictures of people coming in and robbing them in broad daylight, and if they had a gate there, at least it would limit the way they can get in and out of there. And yes, it is very accessible, they're coming off of the expressway, whoosh, not even a block, turning in there, and anything we do is gonna be half-assed. It's not gonna protect them, I hate to say it. They've got cameras now that are taking pictures, so if we put cameras there, it's just gonna get more pictures. We really need to do something to protect them, so that nobody can go in on that property, and if they have to pay for a guard at that gate, so be it. I don't think any of them would protest, but it certainly would take and eliminate people from using it as a turnaround, and it would also eliminate that traffic that's coming in there to rob them. So, let's fix a problem that we created by not making the builder do what he committed to do. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Seeing none, public comment closed. Listen, we're doing, we're doing the best we can, okay? There is an ordinance in the town that does not allow that, that we can change that ordinance. We're here to help you. We've, we're doing all that we can based on the ordinances that are in the books today. I know it may not be exactly as you would have preferred, but we're, we're, we're working hard to do the best we can under the restrictions we've got. So I, I appreciate you all being out here. I don't want to turn a win into a loss here tonight, okay? Okay? We're trying to, we're trying to do our best for you all. And we appreciate the input and the hard work that you all have put into this. You have done a ton of work to bring this proposal to us, and, and we thank you for that. We thank you for that. All right.
Got a couple of questions, actually. Russell and I talked a couple of times. I recall the same as Noel, that basically the developer was supposed to put a circle in or put, put in a mechanism in place to stop all these left-hand turns from going into the community, a wider turnaround spot. And like I said, Russell and I had this conversation as recently as last week or the week before. What happened to all that? There were supposed to be attenuators all the way down to almost a tom thumb to stop people from short cutting the U-turns. I don't know if the question is for Jeff, being our planner. How did that go from, "That's part of the site plan, that's part of what we approved," to, "It never happened"?
Council member, if it was shown on the site plan, then it should have been built in a, upon final inspections, you know, required. But I, I don't have the answer for you as to why it didn't happen.
So I know you're the planner, you're on the front end of the process. Is this a building department issue?
Well, the, the site plan that I saw, from what I recall, had traffic delineators down Dykes Road closer, like, close to the entrance to the, and, and also was required to have a turn lane, which obviously was built. The traffic delineators were put in. I don't know if they were put down as far as, exactly as required as the site plan. I don't recall that. But to my understanding, it was built according to the site plan as far as the traffic delineators.
And we have no recourse after the certificate of completion?
You know, I, let me just interject a thought here. So I think we need to take a look at the, the site plan that was actually out there. I think we're working with a lot of...
Right, a lot of moving parts.
Questions and innuendos here.
I'm not, I'm just trying to understand what went wrong.
What I'm saying is, let's, let's, let's task our team to go back. Let's see what the site plan was. Let's see what was done. If something was left out, maybe we can still go back and, and make, make a correction, right? But let's, let's, I think we're kind of going down a path here that we're guessing on what's...
Just looking for answers.
I know. And it's...
Good. And I like your approach. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I have, I have kind of a, a different take on what, everything we're seeing here. I don't see this as a, a safety problem. I see it as a, a security problem. There is a little bit of a difference here. You're, you're looking at a camera that's passive. It's, it's not going to do anything other than take pictures. Okay? The bad guys will see that, hopefully, and that'll be a deterrent. But that's a big if, okay? I think personally that the town, this is, benefits the town. I, I think the town should pay the full boat on the camera and the installation. We have the funds to do it and let them worry about the bollards and all of that for the traffic delineators. But I believe we should pay for the, for the installation of the camera, the camera system itself, and any, and the maintenance after the warranty, because it becomes part of the town system. And we, anywhere we put a camera, we should absorb those costs, no matter where it's, who's requesting it. We have, we have the funds available for it. We can take it out of the forfeiture fund. I think it's something that if we take it out of that, we don't have to go through a lot of, there's a lot of, I, I appreciate all your paperwork you guys did, and I think I just probably torpedoed 90, 90% of it, but to your benefit. But I think that's the way to fly is, because that camera benefits our town.
Right.
These people are our town. Okay? And by us paying for that camera and getting it in as quickly as we can will help them. And we can then, and they can put up signs. Now, by the way, the, we do have an issue with signs that you should be aware of that was part of the builder's contract, and that was putting access signs in. You're not, not supposed to be able to do that. It's supposed to be an open community. All our communities are, are like that. Even Landmark Estates that has a gate, that was the very first gated community we ever had, has a way to get in with horses, bikes, and pedestrians. Okay? So that, you're, you're not supposed to have up, "Private property, do not enter" type signs. However, you can put up signs that say surveillance cameras all, all throughout the area, which I would highly advocate that you do that. They are not, they're not expensive, you know, to do that. But I would like to see the cam, the camera expedited, and I think that's the quickest way for us to do it, is to vote on that tonight, take it off the safety grant procedure, and because we'd, we'd be rating the reserves. I, I really don't want to do that. We've, we've already rated that enough this year to the tune of half a million. We do have, we have over 420,000 in the forfeiture fund, so we have enough money to, to take that. And it's non-taxpayer money. So it's all, it's all from liens and, and fines that we have accumulated. And we can get that camera in tomorrow. We can order it tomorrow. Let me rephrase that. We can order it tomorrow and work on putting it in. The numbers are already there. So I, I would like to propose that, that we do that as far as the camera is concerned. I'm only, I'm only concerned with the camera right now.
I got you.
You know, and if, and if they want to get security signs themselves and put those in, surveillance signs, I'm talking about that, you know, I think that is more of a deterrent. Let me put it this way. I live in Rolling Oaks. I have a home alarm system. That doesn't mean my cars don't get monkey'd with. I have Ring cameras all over the place. I have hidden trail cameras all over the place where I live. And still, sometimes that's not enough. But what really stops people, and I've been the victim of, of an armed home robbery at, at that house years ago before we became a town. So just, I can, I can identify with what's, what you're talking about, where the whole house, excuse me, the whole house was ransacked, and weapons were involved and all that other kind of stuff. Anyway, nobody got hurt. The, the long and short of what I'm trying to say is, the, the thing that worked the most, the most effective thing is a little sticker I have by every door that tells you I have an alarm and an alarm company and to call this number and what pets I have inside. And of course, we have big dogs inside. I don't have any dogs anymore. But the potential thief doesn't know that. But my point I'm trying to make is, is, is the announcement that you are being watched that really, really helps, you know? Because that's what the guys, that's what the bad guys are looking for. They're looking for the easy targets. Right now, that's you guys. So we need to make you not easy. And I think this is one of the first steps to doing it. It may not be the only step. It may need more steps, but this would be, be the first step. And I think the town should foot the bill for it and implement it as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you, Gary. I certainly would suppo, I mean, hey, I, I brought the safety grant because I thought that would, I thought I might have a challenge passing that, but you know, I, I agree 100% with what you're saying. I would, I would be happy to bifurcate that camera from the, this safety grant and, and do a separate approval of that, and then leave the safety grant for your signs and the other things that are associated with it. That, that would be fine. Before, I, I know you have a word to say. Let me just get through the council first, and then, and then I'll open the, the mic up for you. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Ms. Stephanie, thank you. Thank you for being here, all right? Thank you for meeting with me. Thank Mohammed. I'm sorry he's not here. I know he's got some personal things. Thank all the residents, all right? You can see, I am your councilperson. You can see that we're going to do everything we can to protect your community, right? We're going to try our, as best we can, step by step, to get it done. So, you know, thank you for being here, and thank the residents for being here. Thank you.
David?
All right. I think Gary's got a great idea. I, I really like that idea. Fabulous idea. I initially had a lot of opposition to the delineators. And I, I asked for a video copy of the discussions when the developer brought it before the, the then council, August 27th, 2020. And Bob had pointed out, he is there on, asking, "Would you be opposed to extending the median with the curbs to the turning place?" And the developer actually said, "We're not opposed to that." So it's there on the record. I saw it. And it's available for every one of us to look and the public to look at. So the developer was in support of that. And because there is a failure on part of the developer, it falls on us. So that's when I was like, "Okay, well, then, if there's recourse that we have against the developer to get our money back, sure." But I, I support the delineators. I support the cameras the way Gary had suggested. I think it's a great idea for the protection of these residents of our town. That's it.
Great. Yeah.
Bob? Yeah. I certainly support Gary's idea. I mean, it's a good one. I, I also had another possible recommendation, Russell. Does it make any sense to put left turn only or no U-turn signs where the delineators are going to be or on the right side of the road? I know it's only going to keep the honest people from making the U-turns, but it'll cut down on some of it. Because otherwise, people really ought to be going down to the first intersection to make the U-turn, not into people's driveways, because it still happens anyway a little further down. I've talked to people from Camp, Camp Lingua. Louis told me, he's got a narrow driveway and they still pull in. It seems like we have a, a continuous problem on Dykes Road. I'm not sure if we can take this, start with their area, but take it a little further also to, to give some relief to our neighbors that live on a very busy road.
Yeah, any additional signage that will help improve safety on that road, which is obviously a road that we control? We certainly could, would do that, and it would be at our expense.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things I wanted to mention about the U, the whole U-turn system, people are going to make the U-turn no matter what, once they realize they've gone down the road.
Some people follow the law, you know?
That's right. Some people do, okay?
I try.
And I'm, and I'm actually one of them. But I go down to the, into the school and make a U, if I, or I actually...
Well, one of the, the school...
No, I go around, I wave to Mary Gay, and then I go down to Jim Street and back out.
Right.
Make a big loop. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. Mary Gay never waves back. But anyway, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Mary Gay waves. But I lost my train of thought. Oh. By, by not, by extending the, the bollards and cutting off the U-turns, we're basically pushing the problem further down the road. They're not going to go down to Hawks Bluff and then make a U-turn and come back, because most of them don't even know it's there. They're just going to find the first driveway.
Well, there's two or three streets down there on the left-hand side.
Same thing. They're going to just find the first street.
Streets. I'd rather them make a U-turn in a street than somebody's driveway or in their driveway.
Yeah, I, I occur. But driveways are going to be, going to be hit. Nobody's going to, you know, they're just going to take the first available left and right.
So what do you suggest?
Somehow widen that area in front, like the builder was supposed to originally.
That would be the optimal solution. That's what we agreed to.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is an item we need to take back. We're not going to solve traffic issues here on the council. I mean, not that there were not...
Good ideas.
Yeah, they're, they're good ideas. They're good ideas. But I would say, I would say, let's, let's get our engineer involved, have him take a look at it, see if he can come up with anything and move on there. We're at 10:15 in the evening. We're talking about splitting this into two items. Let's, let's do our work, and then we'll, we'll look at the others. But certainly, there's some things that maybe we need to be doing to kind of take this a step further.
Mayor, then I'd like to amend my motion to what Gary was talking about, to pay for it out of the forfeiture funds and so forth.
Right. So hold on, let me, let me just see. Richard, so how, how would you, you have any thoughts on whether we need to split this up into two separate items? Can we just reword the one item? What, what, what's the recommendation here?
So I, I have a thought on this. So just, basically, you would make a motion to approve the neighborhood safety, safety grant, less the cameras. And basically, the two items that remain are the electrical that needs to come to bring the electric from the private property, which is at the monuments hour, the sign, the entry signage, to the right-of-way, so that the LPR can be placed in public right-of-way. So that's a $2,700 line item. And then the traffic delineators there for 8841. So that brings the total project, total to 11,000, if my math is correct, and Rod and Julio will check me in the back, 541. So their 25% would be 2885, 25 cents. So if we, if we move to approve the neighborhood safety grant with that, now again, what we're approving here is a maximum amount, is basically what you're doing. If the project costs, ends up costing more, that's basically, they take that on at their peril. You know, basically, this is, we're approving a, a concept. It would still have to be run through our engineering department, our public works department, and the engineers that we employ for traffic issues to look at that and to make sure that the delineators and the pavement mount is something that we would be able to allow. So if that, if it, if it didn't, if it wasn't allowed...
No, I, I get that. I get that.
So I would, I would suggest that you approve the neighborhood safety, safety grant with this maximum amount, if you will, of the 11,000, 541. And then obviously, they would be responsible for the 25% of that.
Right. Right. So that's, that's that piece here. But then, then as far as the LPR, is that a separate item?
Make a sep, make a separate motion for the town council to approve the purchase of a LPR...
Got it.
To be placed there with lean recovery funds.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. So let's go ahead, the maker of this motion and whoever seconded, to adjust it to basically at this point, remove the LPR from it and adjust the finances accordingly.
So move.
Agree.
Second. Okay. Any further comment on this item? Any further public comment on this item? Please go ahead.
Thank you. You, you've really touched on what my comment was going to be, which was, the builder's gone. We, we're still trying to contact the builder for things that are, that have happened in our homes that we've been promised. So the builder's gone. So I just wanted to be clear on what our options are at this point, especially in terms of what they were supposed to do. You made a point that whatever recourse that you, you guys would have to take on with the builder would be on the town. You know, those permits are closed, they're gone. And if there's anything that you all need from us to assist with that, or, you know, if, if we need to discuss anything with the builder, we're able to do that as well. However, I just wanted to also mention that the signs, we do have a private property sign, but that was approved. We did get a permit for it. We, we got approval. And so if it needs to be removed, if somebody can contact us and, and tell us what it is that we need to do for that, but, but we did pay for that. And we did not ask the town to pay for it, because we were under the impression that it was on private land, because it's not in the easement. So I'd like to discuss some of the other signs that we, that we're going to need, which is, I mean, you made a great point, surveillance. And where that needs to be placed in order for us to get assistance with that as well.
Right smack in the middle of the road. On top of the traffic delineator.
Okay. Well, well, we'll definitely do that.
That's where I'd put it.
Okay. And who should we follow up with regarding, Russell's been great. Is it Russell that we follow up with regarding...
Yeah, coordinate through Russell, and then he'll get the right staff members.
Right. Because it seems like we're going to look at the plans on what our options are in terms of expanding the road, or is that where we are? I wanted to know where...
So, yeah, I just, I would say this. Let's, I, I don't want to balloon this project...
Correct.
and have it take too long, right? So, let's, let's keep your project to what your project is, and then let's kick off a second effort to see what we can do with the original developer and the potential widening of the road. Or, you know, like a little more space in that
Separate from the traffic delineators.
Separate from the traffic delineators. Because I don't, I don't want to hold up the whole project.
Right.
Thank you. And thank you very much again for your time. Thank you for meeting with us. We're happy to be here. We love this community. We care. We're here to stay.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please join us every now and then.
Yep.
Good, good. Good, good. All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. All right. We've got a motion, a second, a final council comments.
Let's go.
Can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Awesome. Councilmember Jablonsky, can you make a
I make a motion.
Another motion.
Another separate motion.
I'll make a motion that we purchase a camera and install it at the common area in front of their, an LPR. We assume all the responsibility for maintenance and indemnification, whatever, whatever all of that is.
Our normal process for putting an LPR.
Yeah, our normal process for putting a camera in.
Perfect.
You know, for, for that area.
Okay, great.